Oh, we're here. We're ready to roll. Okay, the June 18th, 2014 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, and are closed captioned for hearing impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink may view this program in high definition on Channel 1002, and some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cabled box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. Council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming may be viewed on the Internet at The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of these chambers out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewison First. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speakle card, speaker card, not a spiegel, a speaker card, which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the clerk's office or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see our city clerk staff up front. And if you parked in the parking garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and then see security personnel at the entrance. And we're proud that on our fifth floor, there's now covered parking. It is solar covered, and it's wonderful, so it's not hot up there. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Chaplain Stephen Sandson, Veterans in Politics International, and remain standing for the pledge? And he brought somebody absolutely more beautiful than he is.
Thank you, Mayor.
And would you please introduce this beautiful person?
This is Faith. She's been doing the invocation with me ever since she was two months old, and now she's This invocation is dedicated to Metro Police Officers Alan Beck and Ego Soldo, civilian hero Joseph Wilcox, and former chancellor of Nevada State University Jim Rogers. Lord, thank you for blessing this world, this nation, this state, this county, and this city with great leaders. We know that you have a plan, and that you have a reason for taking them from us to be with you internally, and we dare not challenge nor question you. But our hearts weigh heavy with grief, and our minds are troubled because these great leaders are no longer with us. We feel emptiness and great loss. Encourage and comfort us like only you can. Give us peace and restoration like only you can. Most importantly, favor the families, favor the lives of the families, friends, and coworkers now and forevermore. Rise up, new leaders. Rise up, new supporters. Continue to lead this world, nation, state, county, and city in a direction filled with love, forgiveness, and brotherhood. Give the City Council wisdom and special insight as they serve the residents. Protect the City Council and bless their families and friends because they too sacrifice so that our leaders can lead us. Thank you for granting our request, Metro Police Officers Alan Beck and Ego Soldo, civilian hero Joseph Wilcox, and former chancellor of Nevada State University Jim Rogers, are fallen but not forgotten. Amen.
daughter. You know, it is a very special time in this city, and to take the time out and to continue honoring the fallen officers who've given so much to our community, and Joseph Beck, Thank you. We'll now proceed with the ceremonial portion of the agenda. and of course, having lost our great Jim Rogers too, it's quite a sad time for us. But I want to add one more name. We have a brand-new federal judge here by the name of Richard Bolware, who was born and raised in this community, and his mother, Rosie Bolware, also passed away over the weekend. But this was a woman who watched her three sons grow up, wouldn't give them an inch of freedom, but they did lovingly and saw her sons go on to really great educations and great contributions back to our community. So we have a heavy heart, but as we move forward in life, we do move forward, and we continue to honor these wonderful people by making every day count, doing something absolutely wonderful every single day. You try your best to make a difference every day, care for somebody, lend a hand to somebody, or just in your own quiet way, be thankful for every day you're given on this wonderful earth in which we all share our time together. So for our ceremonial items today, for our, excuse me. For our first item, because we want to get him back to work rather than sitting and enjoying City Council, I'd like to invite our municipal court Chief Judge Burt Brown up to the podium, and Criminal Division Chief Jack Manning to join us up here. Just want you to work and earn, work, take care of everything. How are you? This is wonderful. Thank you. How good to see you. Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, as you all remember, meeting our values of action, which stands for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership. Now, they build our community to make our lives better, and I'm proud this month to announce that the employee of the month is Heather Skeet. Heather, where are you? Right there. Come on up. Look at that smile. That's the whole reason, aside from the intellect that's behind there, too. Heather is a pre-trial services officer who achieves results through positive actions. Heather takes the initiative and has become the department's primary point of contact on mental health issues that impact people in our municipal court system. She also noticed the need to make changes in how battery, domestic violence, and DUIs are entered into the court computer system. She requested training, and when she was up to speed on the system, she created a step-by-step guide for other pre-trial service officers. By doing this, she has increased the accuracy of the court's reporting system, and this has been a big benefit to our entire community. One example of this occurred recently when a citizen who was applying for a new job noticed that his records had a lack of disposition information on his case. This could have kept him from getting his job, of course, to say nothing else. He contacted the pre-trial services, and through Heather's work, was able to get his records updated the very same day, and was able to apply for the job with accurate information. Heather is always looking for ways to improve the services that our courts provide, and is truly helping us build the best community. So on behalf of the entire City Council, pleasure to name Heather the employee of the month. And along with this award, she has received $100 Visa gift card, compliments of the Clark County Credit Union, and $100 gift card from Mundo Restaurant. In addition, a donation of $100 will be made to the charity of her choice by Super Pawn. Heather has also received various other awards from the city and the council, and to recognize her great work, we want you to see to your left a street sign with your name on it, Heather, that is posted in front of City Hall on Main Street. And Chief Manning, how about you first? We're so proud, and where is the thing that I do that later? Or can I give that to her first? I'm the mayor, I can do what I want. I'm going to do it first. It is good to be mayor. Okay, Heather, and then you'll hear from the men that really count in this world here. This is your employee of the month certificate from the City Council and from me, and it does say that she has exhibited outstanding performance through achievement, creativity, teamwork, and integrity, ownership, and engaged now, and has exhibited assistance to her fellow employees in the department and the citizens of Las Vegas. So we are so proud of you, and now I'm going to let them have the microphone. You're first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having us and helping us honor Heather. We're extremely proud of all of Heather's accomplishments, and she just exemplifies the hard and very complicated work that our pre-trial services unit does for the court. She's had so many jobs, I had to write them down for the court. Heather started in 2007. She started out as a substitute for us, a front counter clerk, a courtroom clerk, and then she also worked in our alternative sentencing division. So Heather's had a lot of experience in the court. Heather was nominated by her supervisor, Kwan, because of her drive and her can-do attitude, which is the one thing that really sticks out. Heather's always one that leads, and she speaks. She looks shy now, she's really not. And I just want to thank, I want to thank Heather and the entire pre-trial staff for the services, for what they do and their dedication to the city of Las Vegas. Thank you, Heather. And the chief.
I would like to concur with the comments made. Heather is a great employee, a hard worker. She always goes the extra mile. And, you know, we have a lot of great employees at the court and City of Las Vegas, and the fact that she got employee of the month speaks miles and volumes about her work ethic and her character. I too would like to thank you on behalf of the judges. We appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So how about we step over here and have a picture taken, and then we'll proceed on, but after we hear, well, do you notice these two guys, am I right? They want to make sure she has a chance to speak. So, all right. Oh, are you ready? I was trying to give you, oh, little cheat sheet here. She is breathing deeply. Thank you, guys. All right.
I just wrote a little bit down here. So I am honored to be receiving this award today and very grateful to everyone who has contributed to my success. I would like to thank my supervisor, Kwan Connolly, who nominated me, also Chief Manning, who was involved in my nomination as well. I would also like to thank my team in pre-trial services, all of my coworkers and supervisors at municipal court, and the municipal court judges who have helped me along the way. I would not be receiving this recognition today without your support, guidance, and inspiration. Thank you all very much.
Now, let's go over and have a picture. So, Your Honors, if you'll join us on either side of her two.
Her husband's here also. Could her husband come up?
Come, your husband's name is?
Mark.
And how long you been married?
Just three months.
Oh. Where did you find this lovely lady?
Oh, we met at Starbucks, just one of those fate things.
Yay, Starbucks. I'm big on Starbucks. Which one?
Over on Flamingo and, Rainbow and Flamingo.
Congratulations. We wish you the best. You stand beside your sign, and hubby Mark, come along too, and we'll all get behind you. Congratulations. Hope it's 50 years of marriage. So keep going. Congratulations. Wonderful. For those who think paying too much for coffee at Starbucks, it pays off, see? At least for Mark it did. Got himself a wonderful, bright lady here who's beautiful and kind. Good. Okay. Okay, for this time, I'm going to ask Councilman Beers to recognize the accomplishments of a certain somebody. We're going out of order here. So you never know what we're doing in the city of Las Vegas, but you're prepared.
Which one? I have to, that one?
Yes, let's do that one first.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to recognize a sterling member of the Rhythmic Gymnastics School, which is conducted up at the Veterans Memorial Leisure Services Center in Ward 2. And rhythmic gymnastics, for those of you who don't remember, is an Olympic sport, very similar to gymnastics on a mat, only they throw stuff, too. So that's what rhythmic gymnastics is in lay terms. I'm going to get corrected here in a minute. But last month, Las Vegas resident Isabel Richardson, if you'd like to come up here, Isabel, and bring your whole team with you, all the coaches, too. Won, right here, Isabel, won the Stars and Stripes Cup in her level in Daytona Beach, Florida, at the Rhythmic Gymnastics National Championship. Isabel will continue to compete next month where?
Spain.
Spain. Going to Spain. Isabel was trained here by the Eurogymnastics Las Vegas Group. This is a program owned by Vetsalina Tabakova and her sister Maya. How'd we do? Did I get the name close? Okay, good deal. And Maya is a medalist in this sport and world champion in rhythmic gymnastics a year or two ago, as well as an occasional Pilates instructor here in Las Vegas, which is how I met her. Isabel is the first champion from Las Vegas, and we hope there are going to be many more to come because this program is here in town. We would like to, the mayor and City Council, would like to recognize Isabel Richardson for her great achievement, and look forward to the future exhibitions, competitions, victories, medals, and trophies, I guess. We would also like to recognize, here is your, thank you, Mayor Protem. Here's your certificate. Can you hold that for a minute? And we would also like to recognize Vetsalina Tabakova as the head coach for her efforts. Thank you. For bringing this truly world-class rhythmic gymnastics training center here to Las Vegas. Eurogymnastics Las Vegas is trying to acquire their own building to make Las Vegas a headquarters for superior training of this beautiful sport. It requires a very high ceiling because it just does. That's proven to be quite a challenge. Most of the spaces we've been able to hunt down for them don't have a high enough ceiling. So with that, I would like to recognize Isabel. Will you all join me in a round of applause?
Okay, so Isabel took all-around national champion gold. She has gold on her rope, hoop, and ball routine, and bronze on her floor routine. And yeah, those are quite heavy, but all worth it, all the efforts. Stand up tall, Isabel. Show your best posture here for us.
Wonderful.
Well, we're pretty much every day at Veterans Memorial Leisure Center. We are there from 3 until 5 all summer long. Everybody's welcome, all little girls, unfortunately, are welcome to come and take a free trial class and see how they like it. It's quite a difficult sport, though. It takes a lot, but, you know, we're bringing our best efforts to bring out the best of these girls, the best body. We can see the best strong mind in discipline, training in discipline, and all that good stuff. Isabel, can you show us some awesomeness?
Would you like to say a few words? Are you going to throw that hoop? No, she's shy. You going to show us, though?
Wow. Beautiful.
Remarkable. Well, thank you very mu, oh, more?
I also brought my Olympic medal, if you would like to see.
Oh, yeah, she brought her Olympic medal, too. Let's see that one. What year did you compete?
This is a special request.
Oh, very cool.
So I took it off my wall. This is from Atlanta '96. Atlanta '96 silver medal. For the first time, group rhythmic gymnastics was allowed in the Olympic Games.
Very cool. That's cool. Is your mom here, Isabel?
His mom.
She's busy taking pictures. Would you like to say a few words?
It's okay. We just really appreciate the effort of the coaches, and Isabel puts in about 18 hours a week training, so we travel a ton, and we would just love to get this sport on the map in America. Anyway, she works really hard. We do, we do. I've actually done online school with her for the last two years. So, yeah, but she's, I mean, nationally, everybody knows who she is now. So, anyway, yep. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Best wishes in Spain. You want to take a picture with the mayor? There we go. Good to get all the council.
Can you say thank you?
Good luck.
Do you know when we have another competition here?
Yeah, keep us informed, please.
You carry all of us with you every time you do this. It's wonderful. We're so proud. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, it's a very special day for us all. That's beautiful. We wish you the best. Make sure you tweet back to us. And so our next item, I would like to invite our senior citizen advisory board chair, Mary Ellen Heiss, to join us at the podium.
Don't forget to, don't forget these guys.
You can't do half, you have to do all. It's a very special morning. Here we go.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, City Council, staff, and guests in our audience. We are very honored today to be here amongst such great people. I'm going to put on my glasses so I can read this and not mess it up because I'm taken by the fact that our honoree made it. We are blessed, and with the grace of God, I would like to have Jerry Tarkanian, please come up with his family, his son Danny, his grandson John, a lifetime friend Dennis Owen, and Lois Tarkanian, please. Yes, go ahead. We're going to have Coach Tarkanian go ahead and seat. Okay. Coach Tarkanian has four children, Danny, who is with us today, Pam, Jody, and George. He has 11 grandchildren, and John is representing them today. The City of Las Vegas Senior Citizen Advisory Board has nominated Coach Tarkanian for his work during his 30-year career. He is not only one of the most successful basketball coaches in college history, but has put Las Vegas on the map. He has encouraged his players to stay in school. During his tenure at UNLV, the basketball players had a graduation rate that exceeded the average of a college rate. UNLV has a Jerry Tarkanian Scholarship, which assists former athletes who are unable to finish their degrees and return to school to get it done, and that's what Tark's about, to get it done. He started a basketball school in Las Vegas, the Tarkanian Basketball Academy. He was inducted in the College Basketball Hall of Fame in 2013. He has been recognized for numerous humanitarian awards by various local and national organizations: City of Hope, Kidney Foundation, March of Dimes, Catholic Community Services, West Care, We Can Do, and Walk, just to name a few. He has served on numerous boards: American Cancer Society, Multiple Sclerosis, American Heart Association, We Can Walk, Special Olympics. When he was inducted in the College Basketball Hall of Fame September of 2013, once again, Las Vegas was not only proud to have him as a community leader, but with all that he has done in our community, this Las Vegas Senior Citizen Advisory Board is not only recognizing his tremendous impact on our community by making the difference in the lives he has touched, but in the many, many phases of life that he has walked. And today, sir, with great pride and honor, we honor you, and we thank you for all that you have done.
Thank you. First of all, this is the first time I've been in this new building. It's wonderful. I got to congratulate you. I was afraid my father was going to fall asleep in those plush leather chairs out there. This must be that fiscal restraint we keep hearing from you, huh, Bob? My dad wanted me to say a few words to you today. I know he'd like to, but he'd asked me to just say a few things and tell you how much this award means to him. And I want to, first of all, thank the Las Vegas Senior Citizen Advisory Board for this award. While my father was coaching at UNLV, there were no greater supporters, fans, and followers of the running rebels than the seniors here in Las Vegas. And even when he left UNLV, his biggest supporters and were the seniors, and we're very close to so many of them here in Las Vegas, we want to thank you so much for this award. My father's had the opportunity over the past year since he was inducted in the Hall of Fame to go around to the different places that he has coached, receive some wonderful awards, but nothing means more to him than receiving an award from the City of Las Vegas because he loves Las Vegas so dearly. It means so much for him to be a part of it, and nothing could be better than getting one from the seniors because everyone knows the wisest people in town are the seniors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, I have to tell you, all of us, yourself and Councilwoman and Councilman Coffin, of course, we, when we were young and you were coaching and we were just following everything you did all the time, 24/7, we were young people, and there were seniors then. We're now the seniors. It's a very difficult concept, yes, Councilman Coffin? To believe that we are the seniors?
Oh, I know.
Fine. So this award is wonderful from the people that were the young people to acknowledge this wonderful, fabulous member of our community. Everybody loves you, and of course, loves your family and is so proud of the glories that we've shared because of you and your wonderful wife, who's spent her life in education.
recognizing his tremendous impact on our community by making the difference in the lives he has touched, but in the many, many phases of life that he has walked. And today, sir, with great pride and honor, we honor you and we thank you for all that you have done.
Thank you. First of all, this is the first time I've been in this new building. It's wonderful. I gotta congratulate you. I was afraid my father was gonna fall asleep in those plush leather chairs out there. This must be that fiscal restraint we keep hearing from you, huh Bob? My dad wanted me to say a few words to you today. I know he'd like to, but he'd asked me to just say a few things and tell you how much this award means to him. And I wanna first of all thank the Las Vegas Senior Citizen Advisory Board for this award. While my father was coaching at UNLV, there were no greater supporters, fans, and followers of the running rebels than the seniors here in Las Vegas. And even when he left UNLV, his biggest supporters and were the seniors and we're very close to so many of them here in Las Vegas, we wanna thank you so much for this award. My father's had the opportunity over the past year since he was inducted in the Hall of Fame to go around to the different places that he has coached, receive some wonderful awards, but nothing means more to him than receiving an award from the City of Las Vegas because he loves Las Vegas so dearly. It means so much for him to be a part of it, and nothing could be better than getting one from the seniors because everyone knows the wisest people in town are the seniors. Thank you very much.
You know, I have to tell you, all of us, yourself and Councilwoman and Councilman Coffin, of course, we, when we were young and you were coaching and we were just following everything you did all the time, 24/7, we were young people. And there were seniors then. We're now the seniors. It's a very difficult concept, yes Councilman Coffin? To believe that we are the seniors? Fine. So this award is wonderful from the people that were the young people to acknowledge this wonderful, fabulous member of our community. Everybody loves you and of course loves your family and is so proud of the glories that we've shared because of you and your wonderful wife who's spent her life in education and working in city council, doing so much and being behind you. How many years you married?
I think we're going on 58.
Going on 58 years. And as I would have to ask you, how many years were good ones? She said most of them, so it's wonderful. But you are the most beloved human being in our community and everybody clearly can remember the days, the early days at the convention center ballpark there. What did we call it? It was just the convention center, wasn't it? The rotunda. And those days are forever in our minds. So where's his towel? Oh no, you can't do that. Anyway, Jerry, we just love you, we're so proud of you, and we're so thrilled that the young people of the senior advisory board has acknowledged you and it's just one of the many accolades. We love you, we're so proud of you, and so proud of Councilwoman Tarkanian and your wonderful family, Danny and your siblings and the grandchildren. Do we have any great grandchildren? We better not, I guess. Who's the oldest grandchild? How old is Justine? Oh. It's possible. Here's Councilwoman.
I just wanted to say about Justine, very hard worker, very focused young lady, and she's now accepted a job with the Chargers as their event planner for all games and events they have. It's a good job for her.
Genes are strong. Genetics are where it's at. You have passed everything on and we are so proud of you. So please, everybody and those who are watching, just know this, you know, because you're out there, you know who this man is. He brought Las Vegas on the map worldwide and we congratulate you and thank you. And Mary Ellen, thank you. I know you've been trying to do this for some time and so it's wonderful that the day is here. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Mary Ellen, with hospitalizations and everything went through, you hung right in there. You were a rebel. You were very persistent, so thank you.
Council, anybody in council would like to say a word or two? Do we have any passionate athletes? Well, of course we do, forget that. Yes, there's never a time that Councilman Barlow that doesn't want to say something.
Councilman Barlow has never met a microphone he didn't like. I just wanna say that I started UNLV in 1990 and had an opportunity to really share in some of the most exciting games and the most exciting game of my college career, 1990 and 1991. And of course, it was all due to the leadership and the guidance of Coach Jerry Tarkanian who really just lit the campus of UNLV up in 1990. And so that was a very, very exciting moment in time for me as an incoming student at the University of Nevada Las Vegas.
Did he recruit you to play as a point guard?
He didn't recruit me. He told me I was too short. So I played soccer instead.
Those were the great days. Anyway, congratulations. We love you, we're so proud of you and everything that you've brought to this wonderful community and enriching UNLV and bringing so many students in, including this wonderful man here. So we thank you. And Mary Ellen, thank you so much. Okey dokey. Who had to sit down? Oh, I thought you meant you had to sit down. We can all, absolutely, we can do that. Let's go on over. Is there anybody else from the family here? Please come on over and have your picture taken. And we'll be right back.
Okay, we are reconvened and I'm sorry, I was the one that took too much time. But we're here. Public comment, this is agenda item number nine. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Amount of time, any single speakers allowed, may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name. We will set the time at one minute. And I do have a card from Dorothy Barnes. Thank you very much. And also Wendy Lee Mayo's as well as Joanne Riordan. Okay, anyone else, please come forward and state your name for the record. And the time will be for one minute.
Good morning.
I'm running late. Is this the last public comment for the agenda for today? That's what I was trying to say.
This is our first public comment. At the end of the day, we will have a longer public comment. This is just the one minute.
Oh, at the end? Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's quite all right. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is Anthony Harjes. I just want to say that I want to celebrate. When I first came to City Hall for the very first time, Jan Jones and Frank Horgan and them were sworn in.
Can you bend the microphone closer to you, please? And speak into the mic, because I think we're missing it.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Anthony Harjes. And this is the first time about ten, the city council was back in 1991 when Jan Jones and Frank Horgan and them was all sworn in to be the new city council. So what I'm saying, that's what it is with me. I always have some sort of document, you know, to kind of back me up. I don't need it, not really. But anyway, I've been coming here for twenty-some years. I mean, the old City Hall, whatever. But anyway, I like to sit up standing, I mean, at Las Vegas, I can't stand here, whatever. But anyway, ma'am, I just want to say I'm proud to come and visit with you when I can find the time. And I'm kind of getting on up there, so I don't come as often as I used to, but thank you for letting me show up.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward and state your name for the record. Do you want to push on the button there? It should, there it's on. You don't have to.
I'm Joanne Riordan. Good morning, Mayor and council members. I'm just here on behalf of the Rainbow Company Children's Theater. It's been a citywide program for almost thirty-eight years. And we are facing some terrible cutbacks. And we would like to have our voices heard, make you all aware of what's going on. The Rainbow Company was moved out of Reed Whipple Center into Charleston Heights Arts Center several years ago. They lost, through a passing, one of their staff members. And another staff member has just resigned in April. So they are down to two staff members doing the work of the four previous, or five previous staff members that they had. They don't have a season set for next year, which is a terrible thing, because they usually have people interested in auditioning and applying for the ensemble. So we are just here today to just bring some attention to this problem and to personally say that my daughter's experience in the Rainbow Company was invaluable. This is her book of Rainbow Company productions that she was in over the course of her high school career. She gained invaluable experience in this program. She went on to have an off-Broadway play called Luck. And it was based on her time growing up in Las Vegas. So she took the play around the world. It appeared in Australia. And she did get her picture in the New York Times when she was in New York. So I'm not here to brag about my own daughter, but to make you aware of the countless, countless kids that have gone through this program, adults that have been educated. In the last four years, forty-two thousand young people in the Clark County School District have benefited from their tour show, which is the original work that Karen McKinney writes every year about Nevada history. It's a wonderful show. I don't know if any of you have ever seen it, but it's great. So I just want to ask you, please, to consider in your budgetary item, some money for the Rainbow Company to hire some staff. They've lost a PhD in children's theater that was really part of the running of the award-winning company. They've also received many national and local honors. So I just wanted to make you all aware of this. We are in the process of getting together another booklet that I will pass on to all of you, giving some more information like next week. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Riordan. I mean, it's wonderful, and we know, I think we're all appreciative of the Rainbow Company and what they've been. We did have, and I don't see Nancy Deener here. Have you, in fact, been in touch with our Director of Cultural Affairs, Nancy Deener? I think I sent on to you a synopsis, just a little piece of what the comment was.
Right. Of what she has said, right. And from what we know, nothing will be decided until after July 1st. But we are making the plea now to please consider keeping this program vital. I mean, you know, we are in such a cultural revolution here in the city. And this is often the first exposure that the children have to theater and in a professional atmosphere.
Thank you. I think this will go on.
Mayor? May I weigh in here? I know this is the citizen participation comment section, but Scott Adams, Deputy City Manager, and I know Nancy's not here, but the Rainbow Company, I don't know how this rumor got out there, but the Rainbow Company is in the budget for next year in the Office of Community Affairs. There is a position that we've not filled yet. We are evaluating how we can expand the program and its reach. So we haven't filled it, because we really are looking at evaluating options and how we can improve the Rainbow Company, as opposed to cut back and eliminate the Rainbow Company. We're going to be coming to you as a council in briefing with those thoughts, and then won't proceed with anything on the Rainbow Company until we've had those briefings with you and you understand what we're doing. But unfortunately, what we're hearing is just how much the community embraces the program, and it's certainly not our intent to eliminate the program.
And are you by chance, is there a board from the Rainbow Company with whom the city's working in its support? This is Joanne Riordan.
Riordan again. Not at this time. We're trying to organize the friends, the Friends of Rainbow Company, who are the nonprofit that helps with education and enrichment programs for the children that don't come through the city.
So I would just recommend you give your name to Mr. Adams, who will then pass it on to Nancy Deener, although you have her email. And so you're included in its evolution, and what I'm hearing is trying to even make it stronger and not kill it.
Very good.
In the process. And thank you for coming down.
I thank you for your time.
I see Councilwoman has her hand on the buzzer. That means comment.
I just wanted to make this comment. My understanding, it's not being eliminated from the budget. There are, there's a consideration, I don't know if you're going to fill the positions back to where they were before, but the consideration of a need for greater teaching time and less performances, as I understand, is being considered. And I would just like to go on the record of saying, there are things you learn in the actual performances, you do not learn in a class. And that's one reason why you've been so great, the Rainbow Company. So I hope as you make plans, Scott, and as Nancy Deener makes plans, that the consideration is made not to cut back the performances, even if attendance has gone down some. It's still very important to have that for youngsters. We've had some great people who have come out of Las Vegas and moved ahead in their field. And I just want to make that emphasis, that we keep talking about, we're going to look at it, we're going to see how we can make it better. But I also know that the consideration of cutting back the number of productions is very strong, and I would say to reconsider that.
Your Honor, if I could interrupt for a moment?
Excuse me, did you add your name at the beginning? I was so enthralled with it. You did.
I did, yes.
Your Honor, if I could jump in for a moment? This portion of the agenda is for, an opportunity for individuals to speak on items that are on the agenda under consent that would normally not receive comment. This is not agendated at all today. And we're starting to get into a discussion and deliberation. And so in order to avoid any open meeting issues, I'm going to have to advise you to terminate the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
My fault, I led you to that. But anyway, you have someone else who wishes to make comment? Thank you, please. And if you'll state your name.
My name is Wendy Mayo's. I was going to give more facts and figures on this same topic, but if that's an issue, I can provide some of that, that fills in and kind of dispels some of the emotional part of that. So I'd be happy to supply that, but if now is not the time, I can do that at another time.
Thank you very much. And I'm glad you came down. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to be heard this time? I'll take full responsibility for that violation. I just think it's an important issue, and I'm sorry. So, moving right along, hearing no one else, we will move on to Agenda Item 10. Business Items for Possible Action. Any items the council staff applicant wished to be stricken table, withdrawn, or held in the bands to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time.
Item number forty-two, agreement between City Parkway 5 and Sunrise Mountain View Hospital generally located at North Tenay Way in Cascada Valley Court. Staff has asked that be obeyed till July 2nd, 2014. And item number forty-seven is going to be heard at the beginning of the afternoon session at one o'clock. And that will be my motion.
Thank you. So you're trailing to forty-seven, two, the first item at one o'clock after the lunch recess. Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. And that motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11. Possible action to prove the final minutes by reference to the special city council meeting, Southern Nevada Forum of March 14th, 2014, regular city council meeting of April 2nd, 2014. May I have a motion, please, to approve those minutes?
Move for approval.
Thank you. This motion, please vote and please post. That motion carries. So now we will move on to the consent agenda. And Councilman Anthony, I think there's one to read this.
I have that.
Okay. Items twelve through forty, with the exception of any items, well, we'll skip that, on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments, may be enacted in one motion. That was items twelve through forty. So may I have a motion for that, please?
Okay. Before I make my motion, a correction for item number thirteen should be in Ward 5, not Ward 3. So my motion will be to approve the consent agenda items twelve through forty.
With that correction.
Correct.
Yes, please.
I am going to be voting in the affirmative on the consent agenda. I just wanted to mention that my spouse is a recipient of a grant, but this is just the designation of Clark County as the fiscal agent. Council has discussed this with me and decided that I do not have conflict, thus I can vote. But I do want to disclose that on Agenda Item 12. Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Agenda Item 12?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. With a clarification, there is a motion on the table. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Your Honor? And just for fun, I would add that she's been a recipient of this grant for about a decade before I joined the city council.
Oh. Wonderful. Okay, Agenda Item 41. Discussion for Possible Action on the Ratification of Dana Levak, Ad-Court Administrator for the Las Vegas Municipal Court, salary at $125,000 plus benefits. And, good morning.
Good morning. For the record, Mark Vincent, Chief Financial Officer, filling in for Betsy Fratwell, who's on vacation this week. So I'm having a good time.
I bet.
I'm really pleased to bring Dana Levak before you. You should, I think you all know that we started this recruitment formally about the middle of January, so it's been a long, lengthy process, very in-depth. I think we had sixty-four applicants. Mr. Levak comes to us with a very interesting background. He started out as a public, as a prosecutor, as Assistant DA, as a public defender, actually spent some time as a deputy county manager in Mojave County, also as a city manager, and had a short stint as interim finance director, and has done some consulting on municipal budgets as well. And obviously, so there's a soft spot in my heart for someone who's not afraid of numbers. Dana Levak is in the audience today, as is Chief Judge Brown. Dana, would you come forward? So we, Betsy Fratwell and I, request your support for this appointment. And here's Mr. Levak.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for considering my appointment today.
And would you repeat your name for the record?
Dana Levak.
H is silent.
H is silent, and the C is hard.
Wonderful. Any comments, questions? We welcome you. We're just excited to have you, and having had an opportunity to speak with you personally yesterday, it's just sort of exciting. We're thrilled to death. No, you'll do a wonderful job, so congratulations to the team. And yes, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you very much. Mayor, I've spent so much time in the courts, they gave me a pass to get in the building. They don't often do that for felonies, but I'm happy to have the honor. I want to welcome you. Met you yesterday, and very delighted to see you. And you come from a wild, and woolly county over there in Arizona, so we know that you can handle it here, because it's calm and placid in Clark County. You know, we pay a lot of attention to the special courts here. And so naturally, although we've talked about that just briefly and informally, we want to make sure that, at least some of us do come over for graduation, and we pay attention to budget items that concern those things. It hasn't been easy for this court, because ticket revenues have dropped, because it's not your fault, you don't issue tickets. But in any event, welcome to you, and I hope to be visiting you over in your offices.
Thank you very much. I hope to see you tomorrow.
The Office of Community Affairs. There is a position that we've not filled yet. We are evaluating how we can expand the program and its reach. So, we haven't filled it because we really are looking at evaluating options and how we can improve the Rainbow Company as opposed to cut back and eliminate the Rainbow Company. We're going to be coming to you as a council in briefing with those thoughts and then won't proceed with anything on the Rainbow Company until we've had those briefings with you and you understand what we're doing. But unfortunately, what we're hearing is just how much the community embraces the program and it's certainly not our intent to eliminate the program.
And are you by chance, is there a board from the Rainbow Company with whom the city's working in its support? This is Joanne Rieden.
Rieden again. Not at this time. We're trying to organize the friends, the Friends of Rainbow Company, who are the nonprofit that helps with education and enrichment programs for the children that don't come through the city.
So I would just recommend you give your name to Mr. Adams, who will then pass it on to Nancy Deener, although you have her email. And so you're included in its evolution and of what I'm hearing is trying to even make it stronger and not kill it.
Very good.
In the process. And thank you for coming down.
I thank you for your time.
Councilwoman has her hand on the buzzer. That means comment.
I just wanted to make this comment. My understanding, it's not being eliminated from the budget. There are can being, there's a consideration, I don't know if you're going to fill the positions back to where they were before, but the consideration of a need for greater teaching time and less performances, as I understand, is being considered. And I would just like to go on the record or saying there are things you learn in the actual performances, you do not learn in a class. And that's one reason why you've been so great, the Rainbow Company. So I hope as you make plans, Scott, and as Nancy Deener makes plans, that the consideration is made not to cut back the performances, even if attendance has gone down some. It's still very important to have that for youngsters. We've had some great people who have come out of Las Vegas and moved ahead in their field. And I just want to make that emphasis that we keep talking about, we're going to look at it, we're going to see how we can make it better. But I also know that the consideration of cutting back the number of productions is very strong and I would say to reconsider that.
Your Honor, if I could interrupt for a moment?
Excuse me, did you add your name at the beginning? I was so enthralled with it.
I did, yes.
Your Honor, if I could jump in for a moment? This portion of the agenda is for an opportunity for individuals to speak on items that are on the agenda under consent that would normally not receive comment. This is not agended at all today. And we're starting to get into a discussion and deliberation. And so in order to avoid any open meeting issues, I'm going to have to advise you to terminate the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
My fault, I led you to that. But anyway, you have someone else who wishes to make comment. Thank you, please. And if you'll state your name.
My name is Wendy Mayo's. I was going to give more facts and figures on this same topic, but if that's an issue, I can provide some of that that fills in and kind of dispels some of the emotional part of that. So I'd be happy to supply that, but if now is not the time, I can do that at another time.
Thank you very much. And I'm glad you came down. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to be heard this time? I'll take full responsibility for that violation. I just think it's an important issue and I'm sorry. So, moving right along, hearing no one else, we will move on to Agenda Item 10, Business Items for Possible Action. Any items the council staff applicant wished to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time.
Item number 42, Agreement Between City Parkway 5 and Sunrise Mountain View Hospital generally located at North Tenay Way in Cascada Valley Court. Staff has asked that be obeyed till July 2nd, 2014. And item number 47 is going to be heard at the beginning of the afternoon session at 1:00. And that will be my motion.
Thank you. So you're trailing to 47, two, the first item at 1:00 after the lunch recess. Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. That motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11, Possible Action to Prove the Final Minutes by Reference to the Special City Council Meeting Southern Nevada Forum of March 14th, 2014, Regular City Council Meeting of April 2nd, 2014. May I have a motion, please, to approve those minutes?
Move for approval.
Thank you. This motion, please vote and please post. That motion carries. So now we will move on to the Consent Agenda. And Councilman Anthony, I think there's a, I want to read this. Okay. Items 12 through 40, with the exception of any items, well, we'll skip that, on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments, may be enacted in one motion. That was items 12 through 40. So may I have a motion for that, please?
Okay. Before I make my motion, a correction for item number 13 should be in Ward 5, not Ward 3. So my motion will be to approve the Consent Agenda Items 12 through 40.
With that correction.
Correct.
Yes, please.
I am going to be voting in the affirmative on the Consent Agenda. I just wanted to mention that my spouse is a recipient of a grant, but this is just the designation of Clark County as the fiscal agent. Council has discussed this with me and decided that I do not have conflict, thus I can vote. But I do want to disclose that on Agenda Item 12. Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Agenda Item 12.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. With a clarification, there is a motion on the table. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Your Honor, and just for fun, I would add that she's been a recipient of this grant for about a decade before I joined the City Council.
Oh. Wonderful. Okay. Agenda Item 41, Discussion for Possible Action on the Ratification of Dana Levack as Court Administrator for the Las Vegas Municipal Court. Salary at $125,000 plus benefits. And, good morning.
Good morning. For the record, Mark Vincent, Chief Financial Officer, filling in for Betsy Fratwell, who's on vacation this week. So, I'm having a good time.
I bet.
Really pleased to bring Dana Levack before you. You should, I think you all know that we started this improvement formally about the middle of January, so it's been a long, lengthy process, very in-depth. I think we had 64 applicants. Mr. Levack comes to us with a very interesting background. He started out as a public, as a prosecutor, as Assistant DA, as a public defender, actually spent some time as a deputy county manager in Mojave County, also as a city manager and had a short stint as interim finance director and has done some consulting on municipal budgets as well. And obviously, so there's a soft spot in my heart for someone who's not afraid of numbers. Dana Levack is in the audience today, as is Chief Judge Brown. Dana, would you come forward? So we, Betsy Fratwell and I request your support for this appointment. And here's Mr. Levack.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for considering my appointment today.
And would you repeat your name for the record?
Dana Levack.
H is silent.
H is silent and the C is hard.
Wonderful. Any comments, questions? We welcome you. We're just excited to have you and having had an opportunity to speak with you personally yesterday, it's just sort of exciting. We're thrilled to death. No, you'll do a wonderful job, so congratulations to the team. And yes, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you very much. Mayor, I've spent so much time in the courts, they gave me a pass to get in the building. They don't often do that for felonies, but I'm happy to have the honor. I want to welcome you. Met you yesterday and very delighted to see you. And you come from a wild and woolly county over there in Arizona, so we know that you can handle it here because it's calm and placid in Clark County. You know, we pay a lot of attention to the special courts here. And so naturally, although we've talked about that just briefly and informally, we want to make sure that, at least some of us do come over for graduation and we pay attention to budget items that concern those things. It hasn't been easy for this court because ticket revenues have dropped, because it's not your fault, you don't issue tickets. But in any event, welcome to you and I hope to be visiting you over in your offices.
Thank you very much. I hope to see you tomorrow night at the graduation.
Yeah. Okay, the Yocourt graduation is tomorrow night?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I would be there, but I'm out of town at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, so we know it will be grand and we look forward to hearing everything that has occurred there. And we welcome you and your family. And your family is grown?
I have three adult children and my beautiful wife is in the audience as well.
And her name?
Patty.
Hi Patty, welcome. We welcome. I hope you grow to love it here. It takes about six months. But you have no choice, your husband signed contract. So, anyway, we welcome you. We're thrilled to death. And was there a motion that we voted on and it was unanimous? There's no need to, oh, please, let's have a motion, please. Mayor Protem?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to ratify Dana Levack as the Court Administrator for the Las Vegas Municipal Court.
Wonderful. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. And that is unanimous. Wonderful, you can stay. Unpack. Unpack. Wonderful. Our Agenda Item 42 has been obeyed to the 2nd of July. And so we will move on to Agenda Item 43, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Appeal of a Work Card Denial for Tony Alexander, Senser, DB at Max Press, 2934, East Lake Mead. This is in Ward 2 with Councilman Beers. And is the appellant present? And if so, he would come forward. And good morning.
Good morning, Your Honor. For the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. We would like to recommend at this time a site-specific one-year work card with an administrative review for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
I would move staff recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion.
And Madam Mayor, in just supporting his motion, I would like to say that I've heard, I've had people contact me, some very good people in the community have given you tremendous references. So I hope things continue well for you, them, and for you, and you meet all their expectations.
Thank you. And do you want to repeat your name for the record, please, since you have now spoken?
Tony Alexander Senser.
Wonderful. We welcome you. Okay, there's a motion. And please vote. And please post. Your motion carries. Good luck to you. Congratulations. Good luck. Okay, Agenda Item 44. Okay, this is Boards and Commissions for Possible Action. Traffic and Parking Commission, David Turner, term expires the 19th, June 19th, 2014. Procedure for this Board requires appointment by the mayor with confirmation by the City Council. This seat is for the mayor's recommendation. The options are to reappoint Mr. Turner or appoint a new citywide representative. And it was Mr. Turner's wish to continue?
Yes, Mayor, he's eligible. He does wish to be reappointed and Jorge Cervantes is recommending his reappointment.
Okay, so that will be my motion to reappoint David Turner to this position. And there's a motion, please vote. And please post. And thank you. That motion carries. And we'll now go on to Agenda Item 45, Recommending Committee, Bill Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting, Bill Number 2014-31. Excuse me, -31. I'd like to have the bill read, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're happy to, Bill Number 2014-31, in order to adopt the city's fire code, the International Fire Code 2012 Edition, together with local modifications, as a form of the SRT2, and provide for other related matters.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt this recommendation, please. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Okay, Agenda Item, that motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 46, Bill Number 2014-32. I'd like to have the bill read, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bill Number 2014-32, in order to update LVMC Title 11 pertaining generally to vehicles and traffic, to repeal obsolete provisions, make corrections or revisions deemed necessary or appropriate, and provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. I move to adopt this change. Thank you, this bill. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. That carries. Agenda Item 47 is trailed to the first Agenda Item right after the recess at lunch. We'll go on to 48, Bill Number 2014-40. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2014-40, First Amendment, in order to repeal or replace LVMC Chapter 6.04 relating to business license fees, providing for various fee increases and decreases, consolidating and eliminating a number of fee categories, clarifying the definition of gross sales, gross revenue for fee purposes, making informing changes to LVMC Chapter 6.02 and other code provisions, and providing for other related matters.
I would like to move to ask for approval of this item subject to all conditions. First Amendment.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Motion carries. On Agenda Item 49, Bill 2014-43, this bill is adoptable as if an emergency exists, so I'd like you to have the city attorney read the bill for the record, and this needs all of our vote.
That's correct. Your Honor, before reading the bill, under our charter, we are allowed to adopt an ordinance at the very meeting that is introduced only in emergency situations or as if an emergency exists. Under that particular provision, it requires unanimity of the entire board. So if someone were absent, we would not be able to even vote on this type of law. But since all of you are here today, it's going to require unanimous vote for this to pass. With that said, let me read Bill Number 2014-43, in order to authorize the issuance of the City of Las Vegas Nevada Revenue Bonds Series 2014, for the purpose of financing city building projects, for the purpose of electricity, or for building projects, providing the form terms and conditions of the bonds and security therefor, providing other details in connection therewith, providing other matters relating thereto, providing for adoption as if an emergency exists, and providing the effective date hereof.
Are there, anyone allowed a comment?
Absolutely.
Anybody want to make a comment? Hearing none? Call for the question. Fackel, please, if you would make that motion.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Now Barlow, could you vote?
I made the motion.
All right, this motion made by Mayor Protem. Councilman Barlow, you have to come back. It hasn't come up on the screen yet.
It hasn't been up yet.
Okay. We have to have Councilman Barlow. If you are in hearing range.
I saw he got his golf clubs.
Here he comes, I hear a click.
Miss Pike's on the perfect.
All right, here we are. The power of one. Let me tell you the power of one. Okay, there's a motion, please vote.
Mayor, I have to do that on behalf of Tom Perrigo.
You wanted to give him a coronary, right? Okay, we're all in. Now let's see if it passes. Unanimous. Thank you very much. We will now move on to Agenda Item 50, Recommending Committee, Bill Eligible for Adoption Later Meeting. Items 50 through 54, Bills 2014-35 through 2014-39 will be heard later meeting. We will now move on to new bills. Items 55 and 56, Bills 2014-41, 2014-42 will be heard of the Recommending Committee on Monday, June 30th, and are assigned to myself. And who's in town? Who on our Recommending Committee will be in town on the, what is the date? June 30th?
I have Councilman Barlow, I have Mayor Goodman, and I have Councilman Ross.
Perfect. For recommending on June 30th.
Tentatively, Councilman Ross.
Well, we only need two. So if Councilman Barlow is on time.
Hold on.
Oh my goodness, look at this, grandstanding.
No, 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 I need to make sure I'm in town.
Look at this.
Is it the 30th or the 1st?
30th.
He said 30th.
Okay. It'll be you and I, Mayor.
Oh, are we going to have fun?
I'm available.
And maybe Councilman Ross, you'll be there too.
I'm available.
Shall we remind you?
No.
Okay. Okay. And so with that assigned for June 30th, Monday, recommending, 9:00. Wow. The morning session of the City Councils.
Would you like the city attorney to read the new bills?
Pardon? Oh, of course, we have to hear the new, I couldn't think of anything else that we'd rather do than hear the reading of the new bills. Please, thank you for reminding me.
It's a thrill of my morning, too. Before doing that, Your Honor, with your permission, I would like to introduce to my right, two of our summer externs, all the way to my immediate right, on the television screens left, is Amber Scott.
Hi, Amber.
Amber is not only talented, but she is the talented niece of our Assistant City Attorney, Brian Scott.
Uh-huh.
And next to her is Ricky Perkins, who is known by talented, but she's the talented daughter of Richard Perkins.
Oh my goodness.
And they're with us until the end of the summer. And then finally, to my immediate right, is our new attorney. We have two openings in our litigation division, we're rebuilding right now. And Jeff Georgeak just joined us on Monday. And so I would like to welcome Jeff to the city attorney's office and to our meeting today.
Welcome, we're proud. Speech, somebody's calling for a speech. Tell us where, maybe each one, before, since we have this wonderful time before you read the bills, or have you brought them in to read the bills?
No, I brought them in to experience the wonder of the City Council.
Wonderful. Well, we welcome, any one of you, would you love to have, yes, have it. How about, we'll start right down there on the right, would you like, just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Let me start with Amber. And Amber, if you'll just state your name for the record and where you go to law school, what year you are, and what your plans are.
My name is Amber Scott. I go to Whittier Law School in Costa Mesa, California. And my plans are just to come back here and practice law somewhere at a private firm or here because I'm actually liking this externship a lot.
Did your father force you into this profession? We appreciate what he does for us, we really do. Thank you, good luck.
That's your uncle.
Oh, your uncle. Excuse me.
I'm Ricky Perkins. I'm a student at Boyd Law here in Las Vegas. I'm a third year. I graduate in December. I'm enjoying this externship a lot and I hope to come back to work here in Las Vegas.
It's the best place to work, there's not even a question.
I was born and raised here and I hope to work here.
Wonderful. What high school?
Basic High School.
Okay, go basic.
Jeff Dorcek, for the record, I've been in Las Vegas for two years. I was with the City of Henderson and before that, the State of Nevada, doing legal hearings. I went to law school at Ohio State, undergraduate at Notre Dame, and I'm excited to be part of the Las Vegas team.
Wonderful. Wow, way to go. Okay, Mr. Durbeck.
We're very lucky, Your Honor. We're very lucky to have them. Bill Number 2014-41, in order to extend the boundaries of the city to protect the strip line to be annexed, to make it so that it serves the law's obligations and benefits of the city and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2014-42, in order to extend the boundaries of the city to protect the strip line to be annexed, to make it so that it serves the law's obligations and benefits of the city and to provide for other related matters. And that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Now we may adjourn. And we have, goodness, look at all the time we have. It's 10:25. And because the meeting is called for 1:00, we are adjourned to 1:00. We are recessed, I always do that. Thank you, keep me straight. All right, see you all at 1:00. Okey-dokey. Great.[1412.82] Welcome back from lunch. Breakfast, late breakfast, everything everybody had. We have reconvened from our recess. So here we are, leading off with Agenda Item Number 47, which was trailed from this morning. And so is, are you saying good luck, Councilman?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, wow. Okay, you must have been in the meeting I missed. Okay, Bill Number 2014-34, and I know you'd like to have the bill read. We don't want to read the bill, we will just go ahead and please continue.
I will, I will read the bill. This is Bill Number 2014-34, second, our first amendment. An ordinance amending LVMC 6.02 to increase civil penalties for violations of LVMC 6.50 and clarifying that the director may suspend an alcoholic beverage license on administrative basis under certain circumstances, adding a new condition to LVMC 6.50 to clarify that a licensee's violation or knowingly permitting an employee to violate a condition of an alcoholic beverage license is a misdemeanor and creating a zone in the downtown area where the consumption of alcoholic beverages in glass or metal containers is prohibited, the possession of open and alcoholic beverages in its original packaging is prohibited, and to require that alcoholic beverages bought at a packaged liquor or off-sale licensee within the test room will be placed in a bag prior to the customer leaving the establishment and provide for other related matters. Your Honor, with your permission, I'd just like to make a brief presentation. This bill was introduced a couple of weeks ago, and as you recall, we took the unusual step of bringing it back to the entire council at the last meeting where there were some proposed amendments made. The bill also went to a recommending committee on Monday of this last week, or this week, and more proposed amendments were made. After sitting down with my staff, I have some recommendations for the council, and I'm making them in light of a couple of things. One, as you're aware, we do a business impact statement before we do an ordinance, and at some point in time, we get to a point where people are being affected by the changes that are being made by the amendments that are not necessarily notified in the business impact statement that these changes may be made. That was problem number one. But what the real problem is, as you are well aware, this is Part II of a two-part ordinance series, re-regulating alcohol in the downtown area. And the first ordinance we've been challenged on in federal court, a judge has temporarily enjoined us from enforcing that ordinance, and we're going to have a hearing possibly as early as Monday. And to, just in anticipation that this is going to become litigious, I wanted to recommend to this council that we take this ordinance in small bites well within the business impact statement. And so I have a proposed second amendment to recommend before the council today. Before each of you should be a document titled Proposed Second Amendment. And what it will do is, one, increase the violation of civil penalties from $250 to $500. That was discussed all along, and that was in the original bill and continues through.
And that was a first-time offense?
This is for a first-time offense.
Okay.
It's Section 2 specifically indicates that a violation of a liquor license condition is a misdemeanor, that so if there's a condition on the licenses of the packaged liquor people downtown, they will end up with a misdemeanor, potentially, if they violate it. Section 3 provides that upon a third criminal conviction or civil finding of liability, either one, in a 12-month period, the director can suspend a liquor license or bring a liquor licensee before the council for discipline. Does not require this, but allows that to happen. That's a new power the director does not have today. What we would normally do today, if without that additional power, is it would come to my office, we would use our discretion as to whether or not there was enough evidence to present for a revocation hearing or a violation hearing. We'd bring it before the council, we'd have a full-blown hearing. This way, the director can now step in immediately if they have a real problem child and to shut the business pending a hearing. Section 4 creates the prohibition zone on the Fremont Street Experience. We've had discussions about where this prohibition zone would be, and it's my strong recommendation that in this particular ordinance, we limit it to the Fremont Street Experience only. The Fremont Street Experience is defined in Las Vegas Municipal Code 11.68. It is roughly that area of the mall that you're all familiar with, that includes the canopy from Main Street to Fourth Street. It also includes that area in front of Neapolis from Fourth Street to Las Vegas Boulevard. It also includes Third Street from the former Fremont Street to Ogden, and it includes portions of the old, I believe it's Third, excuse me, Casino Center, not Casino Center, Third Street, where the McDonald's juts into the mall and where the stage is next to the D. So that's just my rough description of it, but it is particularly described in 11.68. So that is the prohibition zone that we're talking about. What happens within this zone? What happens within the zone if you adopt this ordinance today is there will be no more glass, there'll be no more metal containers, and nobody will be allowed to open a beverage in its original container, regardless of where it comes from, and that includes packaged liquor. So that is the recommendation, to limit that area just to the Fremont Street Experience today, under 11.68, and those would be the things that would be prohibited. So let me reread it. We create a prohibition zone on the Fremont Street Experience for the possession or consumption of alcoholic beverages in open glass containers, open metal containers, or open original packaging. Section 5 and 6 remove language regarding an exception to a prohibition on glass and metal containers at special events over 1,000 people, and prohibitions on glass and metal on 4th of July and December 31st on Fremont Street Experience, as after the adoption of this ordinance, such containers will always be prohibited under the Fremont Street Experience. So that's just cleanup language. This means that those days, they would normally be prohibited, now they're prohibited 365 days, so we don't need those exceptions anymore. And then finally, Section 7 adds a requirement that a packaged liquor off-sale licensee place an alcoholic beverage in a bag and fasten the bag for transport along the Fremont Street Experience. The reason that we're recommending going with just that language right now, we heard your recommendation, Mayor, to staple a receipt to it, we heard recommendations yesterday to put criminal penalties on tourists who open bags, we believe that we really need to think this through just a little bit more carefully. Several reasons. One, there could be a mixture today under the ordinance of things that get put in a bag at packaged liquor. You know, a classic example might be I put a bottle of aspirin in and a beer, and I'm walking down the street, and I want to take my aspirin, I open the bag, what does Metro do? So that leads to the probability that if you're going to go with this ordinance, you'll probably have two different kinds of bags that will be required. A liquor bag that would be of a specific color and a non-liquor bag that would not be. And so, and that would lead to easier identification by the police department. We'd also want to talk about what kind of sealing you'd want to do. We'd want something fairly consistent from business to business. Because we haven't had that detailed discussion yet, and I'm very reluctant to tee up an ordinance with you today that results in confusion for the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department or for our prosecutors, I'm recommending today that we simply go with that language. We add a requirement that packaged liquor, off-sale liquor licensees on Fremont Street Experience place the alcoholic beverages in a bag and fasten the bag for transport along Fremont Street Experience. All of the other concepts that have been discussed since the bill was originally introduced, I think are very viable concepts, but I think some of them are going to require a new business impact statement, and some of them require a discussion of how you want to handle the sealed bag issue beyond which is before you today. But I think a very prudent first step is to take, follow the recommendation today, which is the Proposed Second Amendment that is before you, as read by the summary that I just went through. With that, I would like to say that we have been watching packaged liquor for a long time now downtown, and a tremendous concern that the council has had, Fremont Street Experience has had, the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department has had, is that there seems to be almost an inability to control the consumption of alcoholic beverages even within the 1,000 feet that exist today. Again, this new ordinance will prohibit it completely in the Fremont Street Experience, but the law has been, from the day every single off-sale licensee, every single packaged liquor licensee got their license, from day one, the law has been, that cannot be consumed within 1,000 feet of the business. You saw video at my last presentation of people opening them in the store, people popping it in front of employees of the store, and almost every single store talking about where they can consume it when the consumer asks, and they tell them right outside. Recent video was shot on May 14th, and with your indulgence, I would like to have it played. So IT, if you've got it queued up. One more time on the play. Well, maybe we could pause that for a moment. Why, you folks take a look at the audio, let me give a summary of what you're about to see. The videotape was shot at several locations that have packaged liquor licenses or off-sale licenses. You won't see anybody consuming in the store, but almost everyone tells them when they're asked where.
We can open these here, right?
Outside.
Outside? Thank you. Thank you. I like your shirt.
Thank you.
Hey, long time no see. What you been doing, girl? You been out here dancing or what?
She's not paying attention to you.
I know. She don't want to.
Yeah, buddy. No, no problem. Is it Twist?
Yeah.
Okay. How much was it?
Five forty-one.
I think I have the forty-one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we open these in here?
No.
No. Thank you. We can open them out here, though?
Outside.
Outside. Is this a bottle opener?
Uh, that twist, I'll put.
Oh, they twist now?
Yeah, this one, yeah.
Oh. We can open them in here? Or out here?
Yeah, outside.
We can open these in here?
Uh, no, you have to.
Oh, just outside?
Take it outside.
Oh, okay. Hello.
How are you?
Great, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I'm gonna be a lot better here in a minute.
(laughing) Yeah.
Do you have a garbage? Can I take the wrapper off of there?
Okay. You just cannot open them in the store, okay?
But outside, though. On the, on the canopy, yeah. You do a pin. You got it?
Yeah, I got it.
All right. How much are they?
Okay, sixty-four.
Thank you.
I need to put in a bag for you.
Okay. I just don't want to have to take that out. Thank you. Great, thank you.
What is ten dollars?
I don't like paying that price out there. It's way too much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
You look like you're standing guard. Oh, okay. Oh, all right. What's that?
No beer.
Sorry?
No beer.
No ear?
No beer.
Oh, no beer. Oh, okay, all right. Sorry. But here is fine. All right. This is the way to do it.
I'm telling you, man.
Instead of paying those prices out there.
Yeah, that is. Same thing.
Yeah, right? I might need to borrow yours.
Reece Sanders, man, had no bar.
Can we open them in here? No. But out there.
We'll toast some food to open soon.
Say it again? Thousand feet.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
I'll open it for you out here, dude, if you want me.
Yeah, that'd be great.
When I bought these, when I bought these claps, I didn't know what the hell that was.
Really?
And I found out it was a friggin' bottle opener.
Oh, that's great. That's awesome.
That said, the, as you can see, there has been a continued problem, it's been demonstrated in video after video, that the store owners are not telling the people that under the existing law, you can't consume it within 1,000 feet. Everybody's told you can just take it right outside and consume it there. So I think that this makes it a lot simpler, nobody's gonna have to guess what 1,000 feet is versus 99 feet. They're not gonna have to worry about whether or not, where you can have a container, an open container, a closed container, after this ordinance is considered by this council and if you adopt it, that'll be the end of all glass, it'll be the end of all metal, it'll be the end of all original packaging, anywhere in the Fremont Street Experience. With that, I have concluded my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. I know that in the audience today are representatives of the Fremont Street Experience, Terry Murphy on behalf of the D and the Fremont Street Experience, Jeff Victor on behalf of the Fremont Street Experience, I believe Russell Rowe is here on behalf of Boyd Gaming, and they may wish to make a comment as well, as well as other people I may have overlooked.
Thank you. I'm sure I have comments, but I will first turn to council and... Okay, I'm with you. Do, does anybody here on council want to start off, or do you want me to? I really do want to hear from the public, I think it's only right, so. Okay. So, limiting each of you, if you don't mind, to three minutes. We would very much welcome your comments, and if you'll state your name very clearly, no address is necessary. Blood, we would take some blood. Okay?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Terry Murphy, no address needed. The primary thing, first of all, we support the ordinance today, and we urge the council to adopt it. We understand the necessity for the changes now, and we hope to come back to you with further, further regulatory matters regarding packaged liquor on the street. However, the main thing I wanted to point out today was that these, the licensees who hold privileged licenses in the city, it was no secret when they applied for and obtained the licenses that their patrons could not consume alcohol within 1,000 feet of the stores. We've had discussions now for a year. It was last July 4th weekend, I remember that vividly, when the four applications came on the agenda, and we've been having the discussions for a year. So it's never been legal to tell people to consume on the street, and a year later, after significant discussions, we're still telling people it's legal to consume on the street. And finally, the Fremont Street Experience nor its members intend for patrons, either local or tourists, to be fined or given violations for something that they have no idea. They don't know what the law is, and they have no means of knowing, particularly if the sellers are telling them, "You can consume this on the street." So we're, our hope is that the holders of the privileged license are held accountable for their actions, and that once these regulations are in place, they're upheld. So that's, that's what I had to say today, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Russell Rowe here on behalf of Boyd Gaming Corporation, echoing Terry Murphy's comments, and also just wanted to emphasize these efforts and this legislation which we support. One key component of this and one motivating factor to all of this from the beginning of our meetings, Mayor, and the stakeholder groups, has been to allow law enforcement to enforce the law as it stands today with respect to packaged liquor and... to enforce the law as it stands today with respect to packaged liquor, and this ordinance provides clarity in the law to allow law enforcement to know who's carrying packaged liquor. Second point is it comes at not an insignificant burden to the other property owners and tavern owners under the canopy who need to change their practices and ensure that their customers are only carrying plastic. But we're willing to take on that burden. As we said, if we need to be part of the solution, we'll be part of the solution, and we stand here today saying we'll be part of that solution, and we support this.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to come forward, please do so and state your name.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Raymond Fletcher. Today, it seems like there's an assault on the consumer, those not willing to pay twenty dollars a beverage. Certainly, when members of this body sat and approved those licenses, those excuses and everything, you were well aware of what was going on. Now, before I came here today, I stopped on Fremont at Denny's and grabbed a bite to eat and couldn't help but notice people walking up to Fremont Street Experience drinking at that time of day, you know? They're able to walk out of the casino bars, but they're not able to save some money in economical, hard times when more locals come to the downtown area than do the strip. So I think we should really look at it, because what you're really saying is, "We don't want packaged liquor, we just want the casinos to sell the liquor," and that's really not fair. It's not fair to consumers, and it's really not a way you want to lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Anyone else, please come down, state your name.
Your Honor, members of the council, good afternoon. My name is Bob Gronauer, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road. As you're aware, our firm represents ABC Stores. I'm a little bit uncomfortable standing up here again today, but I feel that I'm forced to stand up here and be in opposition to the ordinance that's before you. As you know, it's not the firm's style, it's not ABC's style to be in opposition to laws that are being enforced. If anything, we uphold the law on behalf of ABC Stores. We've been working with the city for several months. We actually are above and beyond the law where the law stands today. Unfortunately, as I stand here, I feel like we're a victim. Number one, we explained to you about a month ago during the last ordinance, we've been damaged by the intoxicated people coming from the bars. Employees have been harassed, there's been theft, we've hired security guards, and we had to add additional cost. We're asking you, this is a universal problem, and now we're the victim here also because we're being told that we're the problem, and I'm telling you, we're not the problem. I've watched two videos over the last couple of meetings. I don't know if it's by chance or by luck, ABC Stores is not in those videos. I, as I said, I've represented ABC Stores for over a dozen years here. They are a great, not only a great client to the firm, but a great corporate citizen. We're just very disappointed. We're just disappointed that we're here today and we're the victim from both sides. We're asking for help. I think something needs to be done personally, universally, with regards to the tavern and the packaged liquor license, but I don't think you should single the packaged liquor license itself. That being said, unfortunately, we had to turn to another venue to fight for our rights of our, for our privileged license. Ms. Murphy said it best. You got the evidence in these videos? There are people who have privileged licenses that are breaking the laws today. I would hope that the council would go down that avenue so we could get rid of those people who are the bad people and keep the good people in check. And so that's basically it. I know where this is going. Miles Ollie, who's the regional manager, is here from ABC Stores. We've done everything and anything that we can, and we will continue to do so. We're just trying to reach out again to the city and Fremont Street Experience, because our way, the way we do work and the way we do our job, is we reach out across the table and say, "Let's find a solution." We don't want to be in court, we don't want to spend tens of thousands of dollars, but we're forced to do so in order to fight for our own rights. So, that being said, I know where this is going, I know where it's gonna be in the future. Unfortunately, I'll have to stand up here and fight for our clients' right until we can get some kind of solution that's amicable amongst all parties. So thank you for your time, and I can answer any other questions, or I'll just go sit down. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I must say, since the beginning, when we've asked for these reviews, ABC has been right there, complying right along every time we've asked, move things, back the stores, stop advertising, and so we appreciate their compliance with what the intent of all of this is. So anyone else wishing to be heard? Otherwise, I shall please come forward, and I'll close the public hearing and state your name.
Hi, I'm Catherine. Catherine Birbonne. My concern was, I have actually been incarcerated recently, and I was just quite amazed at how many city jails there are and prisons. There are a lot of inmates in there. I mean, have you guys ever considered trying to improve it as to people, you know, more so getting released, focusing on their release and housing and approving their food stamps or making sure that they're headed towards a better direction, rather than locking up more and more people and increasing jails and increasing staff or law enforcement, which is unnecessary?
I think I appreciate what you're saying, but if you'll stay on this particular point for us...
Are you, do you want me to stick with the whole liquor thing?
No, I want you to stay on this particular agenda item, which is about this ordinance.
Okay, well, I was thinking of maybe some subject matters that you can bring...
I think your points are, believe me, I think we're aware, but I would like you to stay on Agenda Item Forty-seven. So if you have comments to that, please.
Okay, what other subject matters? Were you mentioning the liquor license?
It's all on this Agenda Item Forty-seven, the bill in front of us for adoption.
Um, no one knows who our sheriff is and who's running our city, and that's why I've been coming for the youth and, I mean, representing the youth so that I can inform others that are in my group, I'm sorry, that are in my age group.
Excuse me, one second.
Not to cut you off, but we're on an Agenda Item right now to adopt a new law for the city of Las Vegas. There is a portion at the end of this agenda today that deals with citizen participation, and it sounds like everything you're talking about is more appropriately addressed there.
I know, but he mentioned liquor and such, and I just wanted something more towards, like, the jails, because you guys are built right next to them, and I just thought maybe...
But if you'll have a seat, we'll get with you as soon as we get to the end of the agenda.
Okay, so what subject are we on right now? Because I have something to say about this.
We're on Agenda Item Forty-seven, which will be followed by Agenda Item Fifty-seven, and at the end of council meeting, we have a public hearing. So, anyone else who wishes to be heard on this specific item, if you would, please come forward? And if, okay, hearing and seeing none, and we will get to you at the end of the meeting, and thank you for coming forward.
Oh, so we, I have a...
You have another appointment.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, council, let's go.
If I could, you want to refer, uh, the council figure? Just wanted to point out a couple of things.
Okay, we have a point. Excuse me.
I don't really have a disagreement with Mr. Gronauer. We do not have a problem, that I have been able to see, with ABC telling people, "Go right outside and drink liquor." But what we do have at ABC and every place else are people taking that liquor out and drinking it, whether they're told to do it or not. If you go to the overhead for a moment, this is a very, very crude drawing that I've just done, but I want you to see what's already in place and how I think it's interpreted. You're not allowed to consume liquor within a thousand feet of where you purchased it, packaged or off-sale. And that's any off-sale. So you can't buy a drink at a 7-Eleven and take it and drink it in the parking lot of another 7-Eleven. All those thousand-feet radiuses overlap each other. So if you go to the overhead right now, this is a crude version of just Fremont Street. Right now, you've got a liquor store that throws out a two-hundred-foot radius like this, and another one that might throw out one like this, and another one that throws out one like this, and one like... Right now, we actually did this map in my office to scale. There's virtually every square inch of the Fremont Street Experience under the canopy that's off-limits right now. Virtually off-limits right now. If I package liquor up here at ABC, you can't go drink it down here by Crazy Eli, and vice versa, and in between, because these two-hundred-foot radii intersect each other up and down the entire street. You'd really have to guess at what little bit of open space is available to do that.
But two hundred feet, isn't the...
I'm sorry, one thousand feet, one thousand feet.
Okay, those are thousand-feet radiuses.
Those are thousand-feet radius that I'm trying to draw here, and they intersect each other. So what we're doing today is saying not much different than what's already on the books, except in one clear voice, you no longer have to guess at where these thousand feet are, you just can't do it. You gotta keep it in your bag and bring it to your room, which is what virtually every licensee told us they wanted when they wanted packaged liquor in the first place. And so I don't know that anybody could credibly argue that this is something that is new or something that is different than what should have been all along. I can also represent to you that it certainly wasn't ABC, but there was another packaged liquor holder on Fremont Street. Remember, this is an ancillary use to your primary license, and so we went into measure because we have a suspicion that one of them may be close to fifty percent alcohol, which does not appear ancillary, but regardless of what it might be, we didn't even get to take the measurements because the owners of that store or their representatives threw our business licensing people out. So this is the level of dialogue we have right now, and I wish it weren't there. Those of you, like your honor, who had participated in a number of meetings beginning last August, Councilman Coffin either came himself or sent his representatives to every one of those, Councilman Barlow either came himself or sent representatives to them, tried to work with the Fremont Street environment, and it's now just seems to be decision time. And so with that, I submit it to the council, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, I definitely think all of us probably have some comments, so I'm gonna start. Anybody first that would like to start off at which end? Yes, Councilman Beers, we'll start at the right and work our way through then.
Brad, do you know if the stores that were shown to be in violation there in the video have been cited for the May videotape?
They were not. This was not done by law enforcement.
I'm sorry, what was the question? I couldn't hear it.
Whether or not the stores that were shown violating the distance requirement were cited.
Okay.
Remember, right now, it's not the store's responsibility on the distance requirement, it's the consumers', and this new law will say, "You now have to advise the consumer, they can't do it anywhere in the Fremont Street Experience," and that failure to do that would be a violation of the licensee, and so in the future, we'll have that ability to do that.
Okay.
I'm looking for a definition in here of original packaging.
Val or Jim? Nope, there's no definition. We don't think that that's gonna be...
You don't think it's fuzzy?
I don't think it's fuzzy. You know, somebody can always say, "Well, it's original," but I mean, I clearly think that we all know that, you know, a Bud and a Bud bottle and a bottle, wine and wine bottle, if we get into these fuzzy areas where somebody has transformed, transferred it from one bottle to another, we can address that later, but we don't see that happening now.
I think, if I may, to my recollection, which may be faulty, I recall at the last meeting, it was the vote of the council, the word "original packaging" was included, and because we used the original, in those meetings since last August, we were talking about in their original configuration and original packaging, it was both of those. I have no idea why "original configuration," what would be different, but it was the original packaging. It was left there and not pulled beers out of a six-pack or out of a box. It was "in their original packaging," those were the words, and I thought we voted on that at the last council meeting as a piece of...
No, it says "original packaging" down there. It's line eleven, page three. It says "original packaging," not "original" anything else.
Okay.
And so, for example, you saw, if you really wanted to, you know, play attorney with this, you saw the woman took the three pack of buds that were together and cut them open.
Right.
Is there an argument that that person drinking, that individual Bud is not drinking the original packaging because it was part of three originally? I see where you're coming from. We'd argue they're both original packaging.
I mean, it would seem to me everywhere that that is implied, it should be specific original packaging, because then those three don't come out. The moment they were cut, it's sort of inferred, "Now I got a single, I can go take it and drink it wherever."
I also, I'm sorry, I'm a few big-minded dollars for just one moment. The, there was a company by Mr. Fletcher about competition, and I know that that is a fair discussion that has been had back and forth. I do want to point out, and I think I pointed it out at the last presentation, that the International Downtown Association is a group of individuals that run big downtowns. I know that some people in the audience here have been to their meetings, I have seen some of the reports of their meetings. One of the things that they have studied in depth is packaged liquor in urban downtown areas, and if I'm incorrect, somebody please stand up and correct me, but they seem to be adamantly against that. Bourbon Street, far more alcohol sold than our Fremont Street Experience could probably ever hope to sell, it's got no packaged liquor. Times Square, prior to it being cleaned up by Mayor Giuliani, had packaged liquor, one of the first things they went after was packaged liquor. And I think a lot of people just agree that there really is a difference between the ability to buy relatively inexpensive, easy to consume, get higher quicker, drunker quicker, without an ability to really enforce distance separations alike, that packaged liquor is just a bad idea, and it is different than liquor purchased inside a casino and liquor purchased outside a bar. And keep in mind, the individuals that run that Fremont Street Experience are paying anywhere from seventy-five thousand dollars a month in one casino's case, almost a million a year, down to twelve thousand a month, and that money keeps that whole experience going. And so there's a strong self-interest in making sure you don't create an environment that scares your customers away. And so if you've got an interior bar, you can turn them away if they're getting obnoxious, drunk, or scaring away people. If they're outside at a bar, you can observe their behavior and do the same thing. I am not certain that packaged liquor has got the same motivation, they certainly don't have the same investment. And what we are seeing, and I wish Captain Anderson were here, he was here earlier, and he had to leave, I told him that we wouldn't start till one o'clock, but as you know, he's been a very, very busy man lately. I know that they have had experience with people getting extremely intoxicated on the miniatures that were banned at the last council meeting and things like that. So I just wanted to make that part of the record, that I know this competition argument always comes up, but I think it's important to separate the interests of the people selling the very expensive souvenir liquor on the street, the people selling the liquor inside the casino, and the people who are selling the packaged liquor.
Okay, well, let's come on down right to left if we can. I think everybody's got it. Anything else, Councilman Beers, there before we turn to Councilman Ross? I mean, you have the right to come back, though. Please.
And I'd like to come back too, Your Honor, after I ask this request through you, of course, to have Ms. Murphy address Mr. Gerbick's comments that he just made, if you don't mind, Mayor, with your permission.
Please, please.
And I would like to carry out a couple more comments.
Thank you, Councilman Ross, Terry Murphy. At the last recommending committee that was held on this ordinance, we had an international expert on, in the field of packaged liquor. She referenced one thousand and three studies that have been conducted in the United States and in the UK specifically focused on the consumption of packaged liquor and the social ills that are caused through that. Some months ago, this council had a presentation from West Care that talked about the number of cases that come from the eight-nine-one-oh-nine area and primarily due to alcohol issues. She focused also on the difference between liquor by the drink and liquor sold off-sale. It was very clear in her presentation, which I believe is part of your record today, you have her written record, but she came to us through some recommendations, and as a result of that, we have learned even more than we've ever cared to know about the difference between liquor by the drink. The other primary difference in Las Vegas in particular is that the holder of a gaming license is far more responsible because they're not gonna want to lose that license, so their personnel are trained not to over-serve. So that, the primary difference, again, the studies across the globe show there is a major difference between liquor by the drink and liquor sold off-sale. It is not a matter of competition or pricing. It is a matter of pricing among the folks who sell packaged liquor. You get into price wars, and the less expensive the liquor it is, the more available it is to people who basically are making their living right on that street, so...
Thank you. That was clarification.
Can I keep her there for one more second?
Yes, please.
Ms. Murphy, do, and maybe Mr. Gerbick, you can answer this question. Are servers still required to have TAM cards and training associated with being a server?
Well, servers, to my knowledge, that work at taverns are required to have TAM cards.
And for the most part, I think Russell or Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, the bartenders in the hotels undergo regular training, monthly training, and within the culinary union, I think they have a six-month training program before you can even really get into it, so they're very heavily trained.
Thank you for that, Ms. Murphy. I appreciate you coming up. And Mayor, if I could just say a few comments, and Mr. Gerbick, I want, let me address Mr. Gronauer's comments about ABC Stores. They're a great player. They're good business, they are good business people, they're great community partners with the city of Las Vegas, and other locations in Clark County. Mr. Gronauer, I acknowledge that, I meant to do that at the last meeting we had this discussion. They just happen to be unfortunate victims of what's going on under the Fremont Street Experience, and that's unfortunate. I don't think, though, Mr. Gronauer, I think they can still do business and operate successfully with these ordinances, so I'm certainly gonna support them, but I know every one of those other licensed, privileged license holders, and I said this at the last meeting, I still believe are in violation of their current business licenses that Ms. Dettleston handles for these businesses, and I know she's doing her own investigation in regards to the... And I know she's doing her own investigation in regards to the violations, that they're acting like liquor stores and not acting like souvenir stores with ancillary use of selling packaged liquor. So that's my biggest concern, Mr. Gerbick, and I still think that's where the big hammer comes from. You know, we can do this all day long, we're not gonna change human behavior. If somebody's gonna open that bag and open that bottle, or open that can and carry it down there, they're gonna do it. But we need that second, that second portion of this, and that's the enforcement. And we need employees trained. And if it's gonna take fining these businesses, getting them straightened out, Ms. Dettleston, plumbing them up in regards to what they can and can't do with their City of Las Vegas business license, then so be it. But we've, we've got, we've gotta move on from this. We've gotta get this thing passed, let these businesses succeed, and move on and get to more important things. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Brotev?
I think we're taking way too long to deal with the problems on Fremont Street. We've been talking about this for over a year now, and I think it's getting a little ridiculous. We need to start taking some action down there. This is, this is the first step. This is a good ordinance, we need to pass this today and just start adding on to it. If not, things are gonna get worse down there, so I'm in support of the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman?
I also feel that we probably are addressing this later than we should have addressed it. We were all eager and eager and we wanted to move forward, and that we, I would be in favor of the ordinance.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Brad, a few questions for you. As it relates to the ordinance that's before us and the Second Amendment, I just need a little bit more clarification, because in recommending yesterday, I was in opposition to the stapling of the bag due to the fine in which the consumer would be up against. And that fine was up to a $1,000 fine for opening a stapled bag, as well as the possibility of six months in jail. And I truly believe that the crime does not fit the penalty if, in fact, that were to happen. And so that's a very important sticking point for me, because I believe that the bar is just set way too high for someone to open up a paper bag prior to, if in fact, they were going to open up a container. And so I want to understand, where are we as far as your recommendation as it relates to the penalty for opening a stapled bag?
My recommendation is to remove that language that you did not like and to consider it in the future, but not now, and it is not included in the Second Amendment before you today.
Okay. So with that, I'm in agreeance with the Second Amendment, the Second Amendment that you're bringing forward, because this conversation has been going on for a very long time. When the applicants were coming before us in previous years in regards to liquor stores down on Fremont Street, I believe at that time, I was the only person that was saying, look, we need to be careful as far as how many liquor stores we allow to take place underneath Fremont Street Experience. And I call it, you know, forward-thinking, I just knew at some point that it would be a boil, a boiling point to where we would be addressing issues such as what we're addressing today underneath Fremont Street Experience. I'm not surprised whatsoever, because I saw it coming years ago. But now that we're here, we have to address this very important issue. The question that I have as it relates to grocery stores and other markets, we require markets to have a certain percentage of their floor space to be alcoholic beverage or beer and wine. And Flynn, you may be able to share with us in regards to some of the averages as far as the floor space when it comes to grocery stores. I believe it may be 10% or 15%, somewhere in that category.
Madam Mayor, through you, yes. In, for accessory packaged liquor, they're limited to no more than 10% of their floor space.
Correct. And so with that, the question that I have, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Councilman?
I'm multitasking, I'm sorry.
So the question that I have in regards to the floor space, how would we, if we wanted to move in the direction hypothetically, to limit the amount of, the amount of floor space as it relates to the, I'm calling them liquor stores now underneath Fremont Street Experience, because when they first came on, they were, as I believe Councilman Ross mentioned, they were ancillary uses. And now they've basically turned into four-fledged liquor stores, and that was not the vote that I cast to any vote as it relates to packaged liquor underneath Fremont Street. And I believe I wasn't a councilperson when ABC came on board, but I most definitely was liaison when that came through, so I believe that was the only... And I don't even think we considered ABC to be a liquor store because they had other uses, but it may be, that may be considered a liquor store, but I know for sure that the votes that I cast were not to have outright liquor stores. They were souvenir shops turned liquor stores.
Right.
So I have no problem if, in fact, we can basically create an opportunity where we say X amount of, percentage of the floor space within these souvenir shops may have packaged beer or wine. That may be a conversation for a later day, it may be something that you can answer now, but I do want an answer to that in order to continue the conversation as to how we reshape what is transpiring underneath Fremont Street Experience today.
I think your observation is actually correct.
I'm sorry?
I think your observation is correct. The, they should not be liquor stores anymore than an Albertson's should be a liquor store. Packaged liquor's packaged liquor, it's an ancillary use. And you have the right as a council to define that any way you want. You could say it's 5%, 10%, you could say it's back of the store, front of the store. But since we are coming back to you with the pieces that are missing from this ordinance today, we'll be happy to look at that for you and we'll bring you some options.
Okay, then that would be a request of me to basically narrow that down and pull, pull that scope of percentage of what it is currently today, because I've seen some stores down there that you're right, over 50% of their floor space is liquor, whereas before, 100% prior to the liquor license was souvenir. So that would be one request that I have. But other than that, one additional thought in relation to the penalty. I know that there's, the penalty on the business is as low as 250 and as high as 500 for the business.
On the civil end.
I'm sorry?
On the civil end, the civil penalty goes up from 250 to 500. We are going to criminalize...
For the business, right? For the licensee, correct?
Right. We're also gonna criminalize violations of license conditions, which will make it a misdemeanor, which will make it up to a $1,000 fine and/or six months in jail.
Okay. And that's what I was getting at, because today, well, I should say with the, with the proposed changes that came out of recommending yesterday, that the consumer would receive a higher penalty than actually the licensee, which to me is totally backwards, right? And so with the proposal today, what penalty would there be for the consumer under, under the Second Amendment?
Under the Second Amendment, there are no additional penalties added for consumers.
Okay.
None.
Okay. And so with that, I'm in 100% agreement with the Second Amendment and look forward to the additional amendments, should they come after this point, so I'm, I'm 100% in support of moving the Second Amendment forward today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. The Second Amendment is better than the First, which is better than the First, which is better than the introduction. So we were getting there. It's not 100% to my satisfaction, but nothing ever is in politics and in lawmaking, and we have to make compromises on certain things in order to get to a greater role, and I think that this will do that. There were a couple of things I wanted to make sure of from the practical point of view, I brought them up in council last month, and that is, for example, the, I know there's an injunction, maybe it will be more permanent than temporary, but in any event, we should make sure that there is due consideration for the disposal of the glass and metal inventory that's down there. According to the testimony that we heard, and maybe it was accidentally spoken, that in fact, some person's case, it was 90% of his revenue. Well, that's his problem. But on the other hand, I'd like to know, you know, if we have a way of making sure that these people can take it back to the wholesalers. You know, you make it illegal at this instant, you create a financial problem for people who don't have quite the capital that other people do. So I don't know how we would approach that, or how do we encourage a remedy to that. Do you have a thought on that?
I don't. No, that's a good point, a really good point. I would suggest, you know, we're gonna probably get together as soon as this meeting's over with and start putting together a punch list of things we need to be discussing for another ordinance, and I think that is certainly one that we need to address. I don't know that I have a good answer, except that anybody who got one of these packaged liquor licenses or off-sale beer and wine cooler licenses, who created a business model that said, I only get to survive if 90% or 95% of my sales is in packaged liquor or beer and wine, was crazy. But that's not what you do. And I'm sure if Albertson's based their business model on that kind of assumption, we would have these liquors all over the place instead of Albertson's. It just doesn't make any sense. And so if they took the risk of increasing inch by inch their inventory and therefore their sales and therefore their gross revenue, I think it's their problem.
It is their problem. I think, in fact, I mean, they certainly have to be aware this is going to happen, it's going to pass sometime sooner or later, because compromises sometimes are forced by the courts, and to show there be an injunction granted. But I wanted to recognize that you just can't wave your hand and then you could hurt people that way. So then I'm curious about, I know you mentioned that you had done a little bit of research on this, and I'm not being too jocular, but I wanted to say that for, in your knowledge, Heineken's was one of the few beers that might not be available in plastic. Do we have a wide range of liquor that conceivably and other beverages that are not available in plastic? Because, you know, and that could be, could be shooting ourselves in the foot, you know, if everybody around here has to have plastic.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I, all I know is that the two things that are dangerous are the metal and the glass. And if there's something available in plastic, then, you know, all the better for our safety if they have it, but I don't know. I don't know the answer.
Well, I don't know either. I think the use of square footage as a benchmark for quantity, though, is archaic, very archaic, because you can take a T-shirt or a stack of T-shirts on a one and a half square feet of shelf space, and I don't care how high you build that stack of T-shirts, it won't have a cost value to the equivalent of a case of liquor, a case of beer, or four cases of beer. I mean, you know, it's just like inventory costs, and 20 square feet could equal the entire cost of the inventory in a store like these. So square footage doesn't seem to me to be a modern way of trying to reconcile the use of a business, because if a person, for example, the one who said he was, he's getting 90% of his revenue from liquor, let's say he's conforming, he's only using 10% of his retail space. And that's likely, then, to reflect what I think, just on my gut instinct after spending a lot of time in these stores and all the other stores around town, whenever we grant a license for packaged liquor. It's amazing what you can put into 20 square feet of liquor space, because people think of just floor footage, they forget you can go as high as the ceiling will permit with your liquor. So it can be a huge dollar value. I think, I think this measure has been portrayed as a method of driving away inexpensive alcoholic beverages to favor those who would perhaps have to charge more. And I don't think that's the case. I'm thinking about the fact that I, I see a lot of abuses here. I have to say, I went into one of these stores January, I think it was, walking down Fremont Street, and I went into the locker, chiller, and I bought a can of this Four Loko. And this Four Loko was watermelon flavored, and it had an attractive can, it was 20 or 22 ounces, 12% alcohol. The appeal of that kind of beverage, and it's not the only kind of beverage out there, and I, you know, I hate to give them advertising, but heck, it's a beverage, there are others that are attractively packaged, meant for a consumer who wants to get drunk fast, as opposed to an adult who enjoys beverages and chooses to quaff them in any way they want and at any speed they want. But in a young person's hands, that's what they're geared for, is young people, not even adults, not even, hell, hey, 17, 18, 19-year-olds, I'm sure, they can take those malt beverages with that flavoring, whereas they'd be throwing up if they were halfway through the can. And that, to me, is a dangerous thing. And I'm not old-fashioned, I just know from my own youth how things have changed, and I question, I really question the motive of people who are selling beverages that are aimed at young people, right in a downtown area. You've got all kinds of flavors, you can get bubblegum flavor, high alcoholic content. That can of Four Loko was the equivalent of almost a six-pack of beer.
Alcohol whipped cream.
Uh, whipped cream?
Whipped cream that's alcoholic.
Okay, there you are. You have all, anything you want, and it seems to be aimed at people who do not drink, but maybe would, would start to drink if they tried that. And a certain percentage of them will not stop. And yet, I just think that's wrong. I can't explain, it sounds like a moralistic judgment. Maybe it is, but I think that a target of young people is a wrong thing in any business. And you don't see that in the casinos, you don't see that in adult bars around town, you don't see that in the culture of the city, because there's too much trouble associated with servicing, serving young people. So that seems to be a target audience, though, for these stores. And I don't like that. And I'm sure that it's some, maybe they can shift their inventory around a little bit, maybe ask for beverages that don't look quite so seductive to young people. But that's, there's no question, there's a target there for that. Well, I feel like I'm going to support this, Your Honor, and I feel like with my thoughts on the record, it's important to know that maybe there are things about this that make me a little uncomfortable, but I wasn't here when any of these licenses were granted. I didn't realize this was so controversial. I think you, my mayor, and I think Councilman Beers, we have not voted for any packaged liquor licenses in our tenure on this, on this commission. So, you know, it came as quite a surprise to me that there was such a big worry about four new licenses that came up last year, and now I understand better the situation. And so I will support this ordinance, and I won't do it with reservation, I'll do it with, with my full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ross?
Yeah, I just had a comment about the existing inventories. We're not banning the sales of these products. They have to just put them in a bag that's sealed and take them to their hotel room. So I don't think there needs to be concern about the existing inventories of cans or bottles. I mean, even the good player underneath the canopy, ABC Stores, I mean, they're, it's not their fundamental line of business. They're not gonna die because of it, but I do want to make comment that several of those owners stood before us and said, this is 95% of my business. That's ridiculous. So we're not, I want everybody to clearly, I mean, I'm looking through this, and I just want to be clear on that. We're not banning the sale of that bottle or that can, but you gotta take it to your hotel room. You can't open it underneath Fremont Street Experience, that's what we're trying to do here. So I just wanna, I just want to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. I do want to ask about the miniatures, because if, in fact, they have to be bagged, and we'll get down to the rest of it, is there a ban or is there no ban on selling miniatures?
They were prohibited in the last ordinance that was adopted, and we've been enjoined from enforcing that ordinance pending a hearing. And so we'll see what happens at the end of the hearing. If we lose at the hearing, then the miniatures will be allowed and they'll be bagged. If we win at the hearing, the miniatures will be taken out of the store.
Okay. It would seem to me, based on what Councilman Ross has just brought up, and if we proceed forward, how else can you proceed? If we proceed with this, that sale of alcohol, period, bagged, and hopefully tagged, but bagged, what difference does it matter if it's a miniature or if it's a super-powered drink? If, in fact, that's the direction, realizing it's already there, so that was just a question to throw out, if, in fact, we proceed with the intent of what's here before us? So that may not, that ban on the miniatures and the high-powered stuff might not have to be, it's just, it's bagged.
Well, we'll see. Right now, remember, you did pass an ordinance that's been challenged in court, I would, I would continue to endorse your vote on that and continue to defend it in court. On that note, I did want to touch on some of that, Councilman Ross, just for clarification, because a judge is gonna look at this transcript, and they're gonna look at the debate back and forth, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Councilman, but when we talk about ABC being a victim, the subject of this lawsuit basically is equal protection, we're singling people out differently. And I don't want a judge to read a transcript and say, we even made a finding by one council member that this one is a victim, they shouldn't be covered by this ordinance, everybody else isn't. I don't know that ABC would be, in my opinion, a victim. They, they're certainly a better actor than some of the others, we know that. But in spite of being a better actor, alcohol is still being consumed in the mall that's going out their front door. So if that's, if you meant painting them in the same light as those that are bad actors, and that's the victimization, I understand, but I just want to make clear that you weren't intending to say that... going out their front door. So, if that's, if you meant painting them in the same light as those that are bad actors, and that's the victimization, I understand, but I just want to make clear that you weren't intending to say that this ban should not apply to them.
No, and Mayor, with your permission, if I could address Mr. Jirby's comment, that's exactly what I meant, Mr. Jirby, exactly. So, you know, that being said, we still cannot change behavior, we can legislate all day long, we're not gonna change the behavior of the clerk, the store owner, the, the, whether they're a local or a tourist in the downtown area, we're not gonna be able to do that. So, there's a lot of factors here. Us doing this, certainly enforcement on Metro's part, underneath the mall canopy, and everybody has to be together on this, so. I didn't mean to frame it that way, Mr. Jirby, and I'm glad you clarified that for me.
And if it was benefit, I'd be willing to state in open court that they are a better actor downtown.
But just for point of, to go back to his earlier part of his point, if, in fact, moving forward, everything that is if, it is to be bagged, any type of liquor, and regardless of the fact that we have in the ordinance, at this point, the miniatures that are not allowed to be held on or sold, if, in fact, we move to anything that's sold that's of an alcoholic nature is bagged, that, what difference would it make? They wouldn't have to then get rid of their inventory. If we move in that direction later?
Right. I don't want to send that message to the judge, because I think that one of the things you did by banning the high-octane beer, and by banning the miniatures, is saying there are different kinds of alcohol even with a packaged liquor license, and these two types are most subject to abuse, as Councilman Coffin observed, attractive to younger people, high, high-octane beers and things like that that you eliminated at the last meeting, miniatures, 80% alcohol, these things get people hopped up quicker, they result in conduct that Metro has a very hard time.
But that isn't addressing my question. If, in fact, we say that all alcohol will be bagged and hopefully tagged at some point, that whatever's in that bag, high-octane or not, I know it's on the books right now, and we have an ordinance that prohibits the high-octane, but going forward, it's just a question for you to consider. And so, since everybody's had their chance, I just want to make a statement that we have been receiving over a period of, beyond a year, complaints, and we have seen the evidence down on the Fremont Street Experience, and so we're trying to deal with a problem, there have been complaints, then we are trying to get our arms around it here at City Council. And as we do this, again, we're trying to do the right thing, whatever you expect to happen, you have to inspect it, and in fact, if Metro and our own licensing is not inspecting it, we cannot affect anything we do to be effective. We are dealing with two things, we're dealing with space under the Fremont Street Experience, we are also dealing with the actual stores that sell off-sale liquor. So, in my concern, I am very much supportive of this, but I, the key to me is that liquor would go in a package, and that package would have ultimately an identifiable receipt on it that can be seen from far away, not just an unidentifiable bag that may have liquor and may have a T-shirt and a, who cares, a magnet for the refrigerator. I am in support of this as a first step, but I am absolutely convinced it has to be something that anybody walking along can see the bag, see the receipt attached to it, and if pushed, and it would be stapled so it can't be opened, but there'd be no need to open it, because it's in its own liquor bag, and that could be a same brown bag which is identifiable by the receipt. So, at this point, I am gonna go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and adopt as presented here today. Was this, was this presented by you, Mr. Jirby?
Right, it would be to, the motion would be to adopt Bill Number 2014-34, Second Amendment.
I'm gonna make that motion and ask for you to put that up for us, please, and ask for a vote on that, and call that question, and post, and then see where we are. And as soon as that's done, not so fast that carries, thank you very much, you will then, moving on to Amendment Three, there will be other pieces. What is the timeline you are envisioning? Are you gonna do it piece by piece by piece? Is this going back to recommending what happens now?
What we'll do is, I think we'll have a draft probably very soon, it's not the draft that I'm concerned about, it's the business impact statement that we'll need to go out, because we'll need to renotice people. So, for example, if the decision is made by any one of you to sponsor an ordinance that creates that original area, that was originally the railroad track to Eighth Street, Bridger to Stewart, we would need to notice people in that area, we'd need to notice them exactly what we intended to do. If you wanted to have colored bags for liquor and regular bags for non-alcoholic and a seal, we'd have to notify everybody of that. So, once we have that list, which I think, we pretty much have that list right now, because we know what was left out, now it's just a question of getting it out to the people that, that need to be noticed of it and getting it in ordinance form. So, I can have you an ordinance, certainly by the second meeting in July, to run through the system again, provided that we meet the timeline on business impact.
I'd like to ask you on that, just considering, this was brought to us as a Fremont Street Experience concept initially. I had never heard of it being extended anywhere else. So, before you go to all the trouble, when can we have the dialogue to talk about it? I'm opposed to it going and being extended beyond unless the business owners want it to go beyond, but at this point, dealing just with that, see how it works. So, I'd rather you not go to all the trouble, but give us the list of items for a dialogue. Does that mean pulling it back from recommending in conversation and bringing it back to the full council?
Couple of ways to skin this. One, we could just put a separate line item on, just to discuss, as a council, what you all would like to see in another ordinance, and get consensus that way. Probably the better way to do it, though, would be for one of you to come to me, as always, and sponsor an ordinance, and then if people want to amend it at recommending, or at the council, they can do it. But what we would do is, we would still notify the maximum number of people, of the maximum number of things that could occur in the next regulatory ordinance. And that way, if you pared back, that's fine, but if you want to go the maximum, we will have done the right amount of notice and put the right amount of thought into it.
So, we cannot, I mean, because we can never gather four people together to have a discussion.
Correct.
What you're saying is, each one of these items, wise or silly though they may be, we're gonna have to wait a month to go ahead and dialogue on each one of these items. We are not in a position to have a conversation about any of them today. Can we not have a conversation about these suggestions today?
Conversation was, is prohibited, well, today you couldn't. If you want to continue to use this line item, talk about what will be in a future liquor ordinance, you can feel free to. We're not agenda for anything more than this ordinance, but everything you would be discussing in a future ordinance, well anticipated by the notice we gave on this ordinance, certainly well anticipated by the kinds of discussion we've had at recommending, so I don't think there's necessarily an open meeting issue, but what we've done in the past, too, is meet with you individually. You know, clearly, we listen very much to those of you who represent an area affected by an ordinance. So, if it was Councilman Ross, or if it was Councilman Anthony, we would go to you and say, "This is your ward, what would you like to see?" In this particular case, we have two council members that represent both sides of Fremont Street, Councilman Coffin and Councilman Barlow, we have you, Your Honor, who have been involved in all of the discussions. I feel pretty comfortable that, just in talking with the three of you individually, that doesn't reach a quorum, it doesn't allow you to deliberate and get together and do the kinds of things, the open medium I would frown upon, I'm confident that with knowing the three of you and being able to dialogue with you, I can get a good sense of what you would like in a new ordinance.
Okay, that, my concern is that if we go for, just using that as an example, that we go from the railroad tracks to Eastern or Maryland with this concept, we have something to start, and we can evaluate that. So, I would want to ask you, unless there was huge support from everybody else, "No, we want to go from the railroad tracks to Maryland," unless, and the only time we can do this is running from one of us to the other two, we can never all sit and have a conversation. We cannot vote on this today, but is there a feeling amongst my colleagues here that they want to go from the railroad tracks to Maryland, which was a suggestion that came to me, however it came to me? And I think we should stick with the Fremont Street Experience as our first go-round.
If I could make a suggestion, Your Honor, and like I say, take this, I mean, as just a suggestion, there are two ordinances now, that this one will be in effect, since it passed, it'll be in effect Sunday morning, and we will train with Captain Anderson and the troops at DTAC on enforcement. We have also been in, I think, good faith discussions with the packaged liquor owners, and we have done everything we can to stop short of amortization of their businesses. Nobody's tried to run them out of business or put them out of business, just been trying to get compliance, and these have been incremental steps to get toward compliance. I think it would be a really good, my personal feeling is, give it a couple of months to get some numbers on this, because we have the best relationship with this, with Captain Anderson downtown, we've got our people working with his, we've got Fremont Street Experience working with them, we will have some hard numbers very quickly, over the next few weeks.
Okay.
And I think we should let those numbers dictate how much further you want to go.
Okay. The reason for all of this is, we went back and Captain Anderson stood right there, and we talked about, he said, "Well, just a paper bag's fine." And I said, "No, it has to have a receipt, how are you gonna differentiate it?" And now we have the person who bought a souvenir in the store, the bag, this is what we've approved, the bag's there, "Oh, I have to open my bag, my son doesn't have his lollipop." And the reason I said it to Captain Anderson, it's identifiable, obviously, and in communicating with our head of licensing, I said, "It can only have liquor in that bag with the receipt," which is just communicating to the store openers, "But how can Metro enforce, now we got a bag, and now here, we have the liquor in the bag with the shirt." So, my sense is, right now, and not two months out, what if this becomes a real problem for Metro? They're causing more problems, because they're having everybody open bags, people are taking their shirts out or whatever. If we put the receipt on, on the bag with the liquor, and had that happen now, that closes that down, we can play with everything else. I just, when Captain Anderson said, "We only need a bag," in fact, I think you asked the question, and I said, "How are you gonna identify it? We need the receipt that says it was purchased, it was liquored, stapled to it," and that inference, inference was that it would only hold the liquor. So, the question is, the dialogue that we could have, and I heard Councilman Barlow, and he said, "No, he doesn't like a receipt with a bag," which is fine, but we don't get a chance to hear each other altogether, except right now, or in a month, or two.
I understand.
Mayor, Brad, before you speak, Mayor, just for a point of clarification, there was only one sticking point, and you know what? I totally agree with you on this, because when ordinances come out, you may be the sponsor, or one of my colleagues may be the sponsor, and I may not have the privy of listening as to their rationale behind their sponsorship of an ordinance that, in this case, impacts half of my ward, and the other half impacts Councilman Coffin's ward, right? And so for that, if we don't have an opportunity to have a discussion as to share our thoughts, to get a level of understanding, I believe that a cleaner ordinance would be able to come before this council. And the mayor is correct, this, it comes to us in a very bifurcated position point, because we can only communicate to a few of our colleagues without violating the open meeting law. And so it always seems to be cumbersome for you to stand here and deliberate to the three of us that had an opportunity to conversate, to explain what the other three or four may have to say, and I believe that there's a, a loss in some of the translation, if you will, with that information going backwards and forward, and so we need to create an opportunity for this council to communicate, as the mayor is recommending, and I 100% agree, as to how, in fact, we can communicate, if, if it's, if in fact, it's to extend this conversation on agenda item that we've, whatever, Agenda Item 47, that we're addressing, to gain more information and share more thought, to give you the appropriate direction as to what to come back with for future amendments to what we just voted on today. Does that make sense, Brad?
Yes, it does, I completely understand, I understand your frustration. The, the open meeting law is, is written very deliberately to prohibit that kind of dialogue. It's like arguing with gravity, it just is what it is. So, we have, we do things, that we have tried to improve communication with council to get all of your thoughts, but to be perfectly honest with you, standing on this end, even with all seven of you up here, even with one agenda item, I'm not sure we walk away from my end with direction.
Right.
And so we're always gonna have fragmentation of issues, but, so I don't know there's a perfect solution, even in this setting, to the problem.
But let me just clear one, one point up for you, Mayor. I'm not opposed to the stapling of the bag and a receipt, so I want you to know.
Because we did pass that at the last, last council meeting.
I'm not opposed to that.
Okay.
What I was opposed to was the penalty, because I asked the question, what if a lollipop is in a bag that comes out of one of the stores with liquor in it? And the way the ordinance would have been passed was that, once the bag is open, once the stables are broken, that individual is.
Correct.
liable to being, you know, one, stopped by police, two, receiving as high as a thousand-dollar fine, and six months in jail.
Yeah.
I could have been opening the bag to pull the sucker out to give to my child, but now, my life has been turned upside down because of an infraction that's, to me, don't fit.
A liquor-only bag with a receipt.
But see, Mayor, this is, this is what, this is the point that you're bringing out. This is the first time that I heard that from you.
Well, because we discussed it with Dean, excuse me.
But this, but, but this is, this is the, this is the key point, Mayor, you, you're right, because this is the first time that I've heard this from you, because we haven't had an opportunity to talk, because I had already spoke to three other people, so I didn't speak to you in relation to that. So, now I have a level of understanding that you were referencing two bags, when in fact, I was referencing one. And Brad, and see, this is the problem that we're having as it relates to the open meeting law, because this, it, it confuses the council, and it really, on some very key issues, and an important issue, such as what we're addressing here, for the benefit of the property owners downtown, as well as the tourists and the visitors that are coming into our downtown. At the end of the day, it's really about the traffic count, increase in the traffic count of our guests downtown, because if one resident, whether it be a tourist or a local, receives such a fine, you can best believe they're not returning to downtown. Now, now we've just basically legislated away our opportunity to.
But Councilman?
Increase the traffic count for our businesses downtown, and so that's, so from a bigger picture, that's where I'm coming from, Mayor.
If, in fact, and again, and I hate to do this to you, I know, but you know me, so I'm sorry, after all these years.
It's not Carolyn, it's Carolyn.
Carolyn's gonna be Carolyn. The reality is, if we have gone ahead and voted on this as is, now what I see, because we have not put the receipt on a liquor-only bag, liquor-only bag, we are now, for the next month or two, are leaving Metro out there, opening, watching other people purposefully have things in the bag, is there any way to put that in this now, that says liquor-only bag with receipt?
As I advised, again, we are in federal court right now, under the first ordinance, and every decision you make today, and every word of dialogue spoken today is gonna be scrutinized by a federal judge, that's number one. Number two, before we do ordinances, we tell people who may be impacted in their business, small or large, what that impact may be, so they can give us their input. The only way we think the whole bag thing works ultimately, right now what you have is a bag that is sealed, and I'll read the language.
No, but we passed last time and voted on bag with receipt.
Right.
For liquor.
What we have right now is a bag with a fastener, which is a staple sticker, seal, or some other means. When we started thinking about receipt, we also started thinking about this issue of two things in one bag, which we didn't talk about. And so if you have aspirin and a beer, and you take out the aspirin, you potentially could be cited for that if we criminalize it. And so what we really need to do is sit down and create a scheme, we have a separate colored identifiable bag with a receipt stapled to it with the liquor in it, and a separate bag of a regular color with the non-alcoholic item in it. That's gonna require every one of these businesses go out and purchase additional product.
Why would you have to do that?
Which is a business impact, and we have to notify.
Why do we have to do that?
Because it all requires it.
A brown bag, well, just notify, all of you, you want to sell your liquor, put it in a separate bag with liquor only with the staple. And you put another bag with no staple, that's what makes it identifiable. When the captain stood there, that's what made the whole thing make sense, the liquors in a bag with a receipt, the rest of it, buy five more bags, no receipt.
Well, as I said, we did not notify them in the business impact statement that they might be impacted in a way, they have to buy more inventory, and we have to go back and do that.
Okay, I'll let you go.
Let me, let me just say a couple of things, and I don't want to stretch this out any longer than we want to.
Well, I think I did that, I'm sorry.
Beat the horse today.
Or Brad.
The reason being, because, Mr. Jirby, we've talked, I mean, I don't agree with Councilman Barlow, I think the fine should be $10,000, because you know why? That first patron that gets that fine, he's not gonna crack that can open on Fremont Street again. I mean, that's the kind of message we need to send to the store operators and the patrons who visit Fremont Street. And that's kind of where I am on this. It's got to be that, 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 that big, strong message, we're not gonna tolerate this anymore. We've got bigger issues on Fremont Street right now, too, the busker situation, the panhandling, all the other things that are detracting from that wonderful experience that we want the visitor to have on Fremont Street. Now, Mayor and council members, I want to throw this out. Now, Mayor and council members, I want to throw this at you, I, I mean, the mayor made a couple of good points there in regards to the
Excuse me, only a couple?
All the mayor's points were great.
Call me a bone.
Let me highlight a couple of them. The distance, I mean, do we want this to go to Maryland Park? And I'll say that because we're reactionary right now to success, I would say, from the Fremont Street Experience. People want to go down there, people enjoy it, it's, it's great. So, we're reacting to a challenge, and I think what's going to happen is, we're going to take, we're going to deal with this under Fremont Street Experience, it's going to move into the Entertainment District, it's going to move over to Third Street, it's going to move farther down, and any, any more improvements down that Fremont Street corridor that enhances the customer experience and brings more people down here. I mean, Councilman Barlow is right in one respect, that, you know, we want more volume, we want more people down here, certainly, that's, that's great for everybody. But with all of the electricity that's going on, growth and movement in the downtown core right now, I think we need to be thinking on a larger scale, not just Fremont Street Experience. And I think that's significant. But what you're telling us, Brad, is you'll bring these back as quickly as possible because of the business impact statements that need to go out there, because that would challenge or change the business model for some of these businesses. And I think that's significant to note, Mayor, because I want it in a separate bag, I want it with the receipt stapled to it, I want the fines high enough to scare me from cracking open that can, even though, you're right, Councilman, it doesn't fit the crime, the, the fine doesn't fit the crime. But that's how important getting this message out there is, because again, we're not going to change behavior, and a thousand dollar fine is going to change someone's behavior. Less, you know, more so than a $500 fine, but I just want to make note of that. Mr. Jerwick, I think you're getting the message from the mayor and council members, bring something, something back to us as quickly and rapidly as possible after this business impact statement goes out there, so we can put this to bed once and for all and move on to the other issues.
Mayor.
And no more cost to the, to the store owners of having to buy different color bags. It can be solved.
Mayor.
Yes?
It, and not to go back and forth, but I, I understand Councilman Ross's position, but I guess we'll just have to agree to disagree in relation to the, the fine, because if, in fact, we're talking about the business owner downtown, that you're 100% correct, came to us to say that we would like beer, wine, liquor to help offset and help improve our bottom line, right? And then, they took it upon themselves to expand into, or I should say, change the business model from a souvenir shop to a liquor store. I agree that, in my, in my opinion also, in my humble opinion, that's wrong, because that's not what we agreed to. So, therefore, to me, the penalty should not be placed on the consumer for opening a bag, the penalty, the higher penalty, should be placed on the licensee. That's what I'm saying, Councilman, right? And so, therefore, if there's going to be a thousand dollar fine and a six-month jail time, it shouldn't be on the consumer, because at the end of the day, if I were a property owner in downtown, specifically one of the gamers, I would be standing before this council stating, "No, no, 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 no." Because they stood before us in previous council meetings to talk about some social media website that had all these negative things to say about downtown, and you can only imagine, two, three people receive, come here for the weekend and receive a thousand dollar fine or six months in jail, you won't have to worry about them nor hundreds of others coming back to the downtown community. That's what I'm trying to protect, to make sure that we have repeat customers, not one-time shot at an individual and send them off to jail for the weekend for them never to return to Las Vegas. I don't think that's what we're trying to accomplish. So, we can agree to disagree, but that's the only sticking point
I think he agrees.
that I, that I'm standing on.
He wants the customers to. He loves it. Okay. I think you did it.
Can I go have a cocktail at a duly licensed establishment now?
Thank you, Mr. Jerwick. Okay, ladies and germs, we are now on to Agenda
Ladies and germs.
Right. We're on to Agenda Item 57.
I guess we're the germs.
Did we post the vote? I think we did about five hours ago. Thank you, it carried unanimously. Oh, okay, so, moving along to Agenda Item 57 for possible action. Any items from the afternoon session the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken table withdrawn or held in abeyance to future meeting may be brought forward and act upon at this time. Councilman.
I have one item, Item Number 76, SUP 53504, applicant Cecil Walker, owner Philadelphia Trust, 240 West Philadelphia. Applicant has asked that item be obeyed till August 20th, 2014, and that's my motion.
Thank you, there's a motion, and please vote, and please post. Thank you, that motion carries. We're still in agreement. Moving on to Agenda Item 58, public hearing for possible action to consider request for a waiver and/or reduction of fees for code enforcement abatement case totaling $1,186 in out-of-pocket costs and $19,500 in daily civil penalties, for a total of $20,686. Record against properties located at 2021 Gray Eagle Way. Property owner Satacoid Bay LLC, SER 2021 Gray Eagle. This is in Councilman Beers, Ward 2. It's a public hearing, I declare it open, and Mrs. Zuna, good afternoon, we haven't seen you in a while.
Good afternoon. The item before you today is a public hearing to consider a waiver of fees and penalties requested by Eddie Haddad. Fees and penalties were assessed and approved by City Council on June 19, 2013. This property is located in the area of Fort Apache and Sahara, in ZIP Code 89117. The abatement for this property was completed April 9, 2013, and consisted of securing by boarding all open accessible doors and windows in the main structure and the pool house. There was also removal of all grass and weeds from all yards. Mr. Haddad purchased this property from a foreclosure action auction on Ju-, July 18, 2013, for approximately $81,000. Code enforcement's lien for the out-of-pocket cost was recorded on the property July 8, 2013. The daily civil penalty lien was recorded on the property December 4, 2013. The outstanding cost for the out-of-pocket costs of the, are $1,186, and the outstanding daily civil penalties are $19,500 totaling $20,686. The current valuation of this property on Zillow.com is $5.5 million. Staff recommends the council deny this waiver request.
And I'm sorry, I was multitasking. Was that an 89134?
Uh, 89117.
89117, and the Zillow, again, if you would, on that?
5.5 million.
What day was that taken?
Um, I did that on
I mean, within the past month?
Yes.
5, 89117 and 5.5 million. Thank you very much.
Mayor, could I just, yes, what did you say the cost to the gentleman was for the house?
Um, from what we could research, he purchased it at auction for $81,000, according to the reporters.
$81,000, oh my goodness. Ooh, wow. Are you that person, in fact, or representative of the Satacoid Bay LLC?
Yes, Your Honor, I am Eddie Haddad, and the purchase price is accurate, $81,000, but that was for homeowner association lien. There is a outstanding first deed of trust and a second deed of trust that has to be assumed as well, or if the Supreme Court chooses to abide by the law, then we can probably have an extinguishment of that deed of trust. There, it's a big issue right now up in Carson City at the Supreme Court level, but these
Are you the owner or representing the owner?
Uh, representing Satacoid Bay LLC.
Okay.
Correct.
Beautiful piece of property. How many acres? You said full acre, half acre?
It is either two or three lots, and that's still, we're not sure what the subdivision did or what the developer did originally. Uh, if it was on two or three lots, it looks like two lots were combined at one time, then a third lot was, uh, added to the whole mixed, you know, to make the, the one property.
And had it gone into foreclosure and then was purchased out of foreclosure?
Yes. The homeowners association was tired of the previous owner not making the bills, paying the bills. I have been in front of the council in the past regarding very similar issues, and 100% of the time, the city council has abated the, the civil penalties, because, you know, we come in, we bring, uh, we had dumpster after dumpster after dumpster at this property, cleaning up the property, uh, we painted the exterior, uh, we brought it, the homeowner association is very pleased with the work that we've done. It's quite a large yard, um, and we're in compliance with the homeowners association, and we just, you know, would like to see that the city council approve the
Okay, thank you. I mean, before I turn it over to Councilman Beers, I mean, this is a public hearing, so anybody who'd like to address this particular Agenda Item 58, please come forward and state your name.
My name is Anthony Hodges, all I have to say, it's a very good-looking piece of property, and at the end of the day, when it's all over, I hope for somebody to end up with it, so somebody can enjoy living it. But thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item, please come forward. Hearing staying none, I'll close public hearing. Councilman Beers.
Well, I, um, I'm trying to figure out why we should waive the lien. Having a hard time coming up with a reason. Why, why? I mean, you knew it was there when you bought the property?
Um, Councilman, we always relied on the city council to waive the, the civil penalties. Um, I have had conversations with, I have to go back in my records, but one or two council members in the past, and we are in the foreclosure business, we come and we bring, um, monies and resources to fix up the properties, and as soon as we take over the properties, then we're able to, to do so. But prior to that, I think the penalty is there to have the banker, if the bank was to take the property back, to have the, the homeowner to step up to the plate and fix up these properties. But if somebody comes in from outside, I can, if, perhaps given more time, bring back instances on several occasions where, you know, we've applied for the waiver of the, of the, the penalties only, not the actual cost, but the penalties that are associated, and we've, they've always been granted.
Madam Mayor, if I might interject, we have at times
Yes, please.
We have at times done that, but we have at times, I know, for example, a couple of times, my ward, we have expected the full amount to be paid of the civil penalties, and sometimes, as you know, we've had partial amounts. I don't know if that helps any.
Mayor, if I may, Councilman Beers. Councilman Tarkanian is absolutely correct. When you look at Wards 1, 3, and 5, which traditionally have the majority of properties that come before us from code enforcement, a number of those properties that have liens on them are much higher than the value of the property. So, there's no way to make whole, holding that property hostage from a lien, as far as, from a sale point, only because the lien is higher than the value of the asset. In this particular case, it's the reverse, which is not often, whereas the value of this property is probably 100 times higher than the lien, it, probably more than 100 times higher than the lien that's on the property. So, to do that comparison for me, and basically weigh the two, I can't see how we would, you know, remedy any reduction as it relates to your request before today. And so, that's just a perspective that I want to lend moving forward, because we, you know, in the past, we've basically done 10% or basically 0% and eliminated in order for the, the investment to basically take place, or the redevelopment to take place for the investment. And so, for me, it's, it's upside down today, and, and it's something that I personally couldn't support.
May I, Councilman?
So, Councilman Beers, do you have a motion that you want to make? Oh, you do?
Thank you very much, Mayor Protim. Well, I don't, I think actually Bob never surrendered the floor, so he, he still has the microphone, so I'll, you know, if I can just ask a question of staff, if I may, would that be all right? He agrees. I know you have, in the past, had some properties that you have shaped up very nicely in Ward 3, and we have granted you waivers on the, on the fines as an encouragement to continue to do that. I know of one apartment building on, near Oki, maybe Rexford and Oki in that area, that you did a good job on, and it helped the neighborhood a lot, Eddie, so that, that's a good thing. We've even helped you on some others. There was one in the commercial area, I was thinking about, how many months ago was it you came to us on the one on West Utah? Was it East Utah or West Utah?
Uh, East Utah.
East Utah?
Yes, correct.
Is that a little commercial building or something?
Uh, yes, it is. It was a motel at one time.
Okay. How are you doing on that one?
Wonderful. Uh, we did the asbestos abatement, and we are boarding up the building right now. The asbestos abatement took a little bit longer than expected. It took, it was supposed to take eight days per contract, it took about 38 days.
Are you up to date with us?
I'm sorry?
Are you up to date with us? I, I don't even remember what we waived in that case. Can you recall what we waived?
Uh, I paid a huge tax bill, prior tax bill, as well as, um, abatement. I'm not sure if there were any waivers on that, or if we requested any waivers.
Maybe we can ask Vicki if
There was
What's the status on that Utah property, Vicki?
We did not have any prior waivers on that property, and current status is, that I received from the other code enforcement supervisor who is working on this case, is that the property is open and accessible. Um, he has been in, in conversations with Mr. Haddad's attorney, but as of yet, they have not finished securing the property, and so, we are in the process of obtaining bids, and if they don't secure it correctly, then we will move
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You, you were in front of us, and you presented a proposal to, to buy
Councilman Coffin?
waive some things here?
Mr. Scott, I, I just want to make sure we're not violating any, any issues here.
We're, we're fine.
We're talking about another piece of property.
I guess we're fine in, in the sense that he was asking him about, he, he brought the issue up about other properties we've waived, so we're now continuing with that subject.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Your Honor. So, well, what have we got here? We've got some confusion? You haven't paid what you owe us, or what? What's going on?
Councilman, everything on Utah is paid. We were proactive and hired a professional asbestos company. We have removed the asbestos. We had to wait for the clearance certificates to come in before we can move forward with the boarding up of the building. We have, we are in the process of boarding the building as we speak. We had to wait, unfortunately, for the asbestos company to do so. I don't recall any waivers of any fees on that property. I know that there was approximately $100,000 paid back to the city, um, but that was for abatement, uh, other costs on behalf of the city, as well as back taxes.
It sounds like we're moving on that property, though, which confuses me, because if you were, if you were actively working the property, we wouldn't be moving toward you, and I don't know whether that's because we haven't heard back from you, or if it's because your lawyer that you mentioned is not getting back to us, you know?
Last, last communication.
Apparently, that, apparently you owe us some money.
Not that I, not that I know of.
There is currently $950 in outstanding fees, fees and fines on the property for failed inspections, so, if at some point that we have to secure the property up to city standards because the property owner fails to do it, then, um, we will process it through as a regular abatement, and it will come before you, or the hearing officer.
I apologize, I was not aware that there was $950 in
Do you have your checkbook with you today?
Well, absolutely, well, you know, the $950, I have cash with me today, but if there's $950, I will make sure that my asbestos removal company pays it. The delay was on their part.
I didn't mean to get away from the other subject, but you brought it up, and I think that
Okay, um, Councilman Coffin, Mr. Scott has told me we're getting a little too far off
I will go, I think you're right, Mayor.
So, let's go ahead and
We'll go back, but I didn't realize we had a problem.
Do you have any other questions on this particular property?
Uh, well, how much are these first and second liens, the first and second mortgages on this property?
Uh, are we talking about Gray Eagle again?
We're back on Gray Eagle now.
Uh, just give me one minute, and I can pull that up for you.
Is it within a half a million or so?
Uh, it's over three or four million, and that value is not accurate, the Zillow value is not accurate. value is not accurate.
So you think you're still assuming loans, assuming debts of three or four million?
Perhaps, yeah. Yes, uh, until we actually hear back from the Supreme Court, everything we acquire is subject to potentially a first seat of trust.
What's the issue in front of the Supreme Court, though? Why would you be?
The issue in front of the Supreme Court, I'm glad you, uh, you asked, uh, you asked that question, is, is the homeowner association lien have a super priority over a first seat of trust or not? We seem to think that it does. The district attorney seems to think that it does. Um, half of the district attorneys, uh, half of the district, uh, judges seem that it, uh, seem to think that it does, and the other half seem that it don't. Uh, we took the case up to the Supreme Court. There's over a hundred and fifty-plus cases in front of the Supreme Court right now, uh, that are being questioned, and then so until, uh, you know, verdict comes back, uh, a lot of these appeals are, we're still not sure where we're at on these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Beers?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. I would move to obey this item till the July 2nd City Council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, please vote.
So that we can have, uh, further discussion. I haven't, Mr. Dives not come see me to talk about this, and we've just got some issues to talk about.
Do you have any other questions for me?
Nope, we're gonna vote. Okay. You and Councilman Beers will be having some discussions between now and then. Okay, go ahead and post. Motion carries. We will move on to item numbers, uh, 59 through 63, may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with conditions and all, and all standard conditions for the applications recommended by staff should request to have that item removed, uh, from this portion of the agenda. Item number 59 is RQR 53802, applicant Reagan, National Advertising of Nevada, owner, uh, G.J. Sahara, required review and approved special use permit for a 40-foot-tall, 14-by-48-foot premise sign at 1,000 East Sahara Avenue, C1. Councilman Coffin, Ward Three. Item number 60, RQR 53805, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, owner Miller Lance and Mary Ann, a required review and approved special use permit for a 55-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 3700 East Charleston Boulevard. This is, uh, Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Item number 63, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, owner 6122 West Sahara Avenue, required review and approved special use permit, uh, for a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 6118 West Sahara. This is Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Our six, item number 62, RQR 53814, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, owner Sunstone Rancho, required review and approved special use permit for a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 4850 North Rancho. This is, uh, Ward Four, Councilman Anthony. Item number 63, RQR 53816, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor, owner 2199 North Rainbow Holdings, a required review of special use permit for a 40-foot-tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 2201 North Rainbow Boulevard. Uh, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow, 59 through 63, recommended for approval by staff. All these items are public hearings, which I now declare open. So is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on any of those items? Uh, seeing none, um, does anyone want to pull one of those items up here, or are we good?
Mayor Protem?
I, I've had no objections or protests on the two in Ward Three.
Okay.
If we could pull item number 61, uh, there's been a request to change one of the conditions of approval, so if we could hear that item separately.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve items 59, 60, 62, and 63. So go ahead and vote, please. And post. Item carries. We will go on to item number 61, which I read into the record, so, Mr. Fag.
Uh, the request has been made to amend condition number two of this required review, uh, from a review period of five years to a review period of three years. Uh, and so the request, again, is to change condition number two for a review period of three years.
Okay, I'll state your name and make your comment.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem. Rod Carter, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. Uh, we had the opportunity to speak with Councilman. We have no problem with the revised timeline, and we concur with the conditions.
Okay, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion.
As, as changed.
With the condition.
With the condition.
Please vote. And post. All right, motion carries. Okay, items number, uh, 64, 65, 66, and 67. Item number 64, GPA 52116, a request for a general plan amendment from RNP Rural Neighborhood Preservation to medium-low-density residential. Request has been amended to low-density residential. Item number 65, ZON 52117, a request for rezoning from undeveloped rural neighborhood preservation, general plan designation to RCL, single-family compact lot. Note, request has been amended to a R1 single-family residential. Item number 66, WVR 52169, request for a waiver to allow two intersections to be offset at 183 feet and 194 feet, where the minimum offset allowed is 220 feet. And item number 67, the TMP 52119, request for a tentative map for proposed 63-lot, single-family residential subdivision. The applicant is Richmond American Homes, and the owner is G. Spring LLC on 10.18, 18 acres at the southwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Grand Canyon Drive. Staff recommends denial of all items, and the planning commission recommends approval of all items. Items 66 and 67 are U. undeveloped zone, RNP Rural Neighborhood Preservation, general plan amendment designation, proposed RCL, single-family compact lot. These items are in Ward Six. Councilman Ross, under public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Yes. Good afternoon. Bob Gronhour, 8345, West Sunset Road. I'm here representing the applicant, Richmond American Homes, in this matter. Um, I'll make this fairly short and sweet. We, we spent a lot of time working with the neighbors in the general vicinity in the councilman's office. We originally had a, an application for a higher density. If you take a look on the overhead here that I have, initially, we had 63 lots here, which was coming in with a, obviously, a much higher density, closer to eight units to the acre, where today, where we've come in, we've, uh, amended the land use plan to a low-density. The density is about 3.9 units to the acre. The average lot size is about 7, 7,300 square feet. Um, Richmond American is building in this area several other projects, and we're excited to move forward with this project. Um, the planning commission has recommended approval of all the applications. A matter of fact, at the planning commission hearing, we did have one gentleman from one of the neighborhoods come out and speak in support. As you know, it's not easy to have people come out and speak in support. It's easier to come out in opposition. So with that being said, we'd ask you to follow the planning commission's recommendations, and I'd like to, uh, thank councilman's office for getting us to this point, to where we are today.
Okay, it's a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Come forward and state your name.
My name is Anthony Hardes. Since all three items are related, and it, I was, my question was since the staff and, and, uh, and, and, uh, what do you call it, planning, uh, kind of at odds, you know, like, uh, one approved and other dis, uh, one approved, and the other dis, whatever. But the point is, if they can work all that out and get it all approved under one banner, then it's okay with me. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, I close the public hearing. Mr. Fag, anything else you'd want to add?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. There are two conditions that I will need to add to item number 67. The applicant submitted a revised map to us on Thursday of last week, uh, revising pedestrian access on the west side of the property, and so what I need to do is read two conditions into the record for that one. One is relative to the date of the map, just making sure that as we go through the final map process, we have the correct map. And then the second one is relative to the fence on the very west side of the pedestrian easement on the west side of the property, uh, to make sure that there's view fencing on the west side of that for safety reasons. And so when we get to item number 67, I will read those two items into the record.
Any issues with those, Mr. Gronhour?
Uh, no, no, sir.
Okay, any, uh, other comments from the City Council? Okay, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, um, Mayor Protem. Uh, Mr. Fag, would you address the denial of these items by staff, please?
Our original recommendation for denial was because of the density and the number of units that were proposed. We found that to be inconsistent with the surrounding properties. However, the applicant has since redesigned the project and reduced the density down to, uh, 40 units, I believe. Uh, and so that's much more compatible with what is surrounding.
Thank you, Mr. Fag, and through the mayor, um, it, it matches the other densities around that area tremendously. Uh, we are going to find mayor and council members, a lot of these parcels in this area, general vicinity, and in the Centennial Hills, Ward Six, that are going to be difficult to map, difficult to put streets in, and difficult to, to get the homes built on them. Um, Mr. Gronhour, please express my appreciation of Richmond American for working so closely with me and the neighbors, uh, to make this more conducive to, to the area out here, so I appreciate that. And with that, Mayor, I would move to follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval of gen item 64.
Okay, there's a motion, please vote. And post. Motion carries, item number 65.
I would also follow, uh, move to follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
All right, there's a motion, please vote. And post. Motion carries, item number 66.
Also move to follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
There's a motion, please vote. Oops. And post. Motion carries, and last item, 67.
Uh, Mr. Fag, you want to read those conditions, please?
Yes, the first added condition would be, "All plans shall be in conformance with the tentative map, date stamped June 18th of 2014." And then, condition B would be, "Any walls or fences erected along the western portion of this tentative map shall be solid for the first three feet, and then any portion beyond three feet shall be open view fencing. All walls or fences shall be constructed for Title 19.06.040. A wall elevation shall be submitted to the planning department detailing any walls along the western portion of this tentative map prior to the submission of any civil plans."
And Mr. Gronhour, for the record, do you agree to those conditions?
Yes, sir, I do agree.
Mayor and council on the gen item 67, I would move to follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, and as amended.
Okay, there's a motion, please vote. And post. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, counsel, and have a good day. Take care.
Very good. Item 68, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, apologies. Uh, this is agenda item 68, GPA 53501, public hearing, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, possible action or request to adopt an updated public facilities and building element and revise the Las Vegas 202L master plan accordingly. This is in reference to all wards. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. It is a public hearing, which I declare open, and is, we are the applicant. So, anyone presenting on our part, please, Mr. Fag.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. At the last session of the legislature, the City of Las Vegas proposed a bill to reduce the number of elements required as part of a city's master plan. Previously, the, uh, Nevada revised statutes had required that a master plan consists of 19 separate elements. Uh, with the approval of the legislation, we now are only required to have eight elements in our master plan, and this is one of the first elements that we're bringing forward to you that combines a number of those together. Uh, the elements that are combined together into this, uh, public facilities and services element include the economic element, the public facility and services element, the public buildings element, and the school facilities element. And what this element is intended to do is to basically map out for the city the required services and facilities, including utilities, uh, sewer facilities, drainage basins, public facilities such as public buildings, fire stations, city hall, et cetera, and then also school facilities. And so that's what this, uh, combined element is intended to address. Uh, we have met with the different city departments in terms of putting these recommendations together. We've also met with the school district in terms of the citing of school facilities, uh, and so this is what we have before you this afternoon, is this combined element. The original elements that this was combined from were adopted between 2007 and 2009, so it's been necessary for us to update a lot of information and note some of the accomplishments that the city has made over the past five to six years, since, uh, these were previously adopted. Um, some of the things that we have done include additional, uh, detention basins, including environmental facilities at Floyd Lamp Park. Um, we are also still in compliance with the Class V certification from the National Flood Insurance Program. Um, there are only 12 communities that have a higher rating than we do, so that's certainly something to celebrate as a city. Uh, other things that have been accomplished in terms of public buildings include the development of the city hall that we're in now. Uh, that's one of the things, uh, that's achieved through this element. Also, we've built four new fire stations, and thankfully, Councilman Coffin pointed out that we had missed one of those, Station 108, which recently opened, so we do have that included in this element now. We do appreciate, uh, his reading of that and making sure that we did include that. And then also the city's sustainability efforts in terms of how we maintain the public buildings. Uh, Tom Perrigo and his folks have done a terrific job in terms of reducing our consumption of energy and water at city facilities, and so that's another important goal that we have listed as part of this element. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we would seek your support of this.
Um, thank you, Mr. Fag. Would this mean the buildings only in the public parks, or does this have any reference whatsoever to public parks?
Uh, no, parks are covered under a separate element, and that is under the city's Recreation Parks and Recreation Element.
Yes, and therefore those building structures are in that piece.
Are covered under a separate element.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions here? Anyone from the public? Nope. Okay, we close the public hearing, and we entertain a motion unless you have a question.
Move for approval.
Okay, thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. We love streamlining. Wonderful. One-stop shopping, streamlining, we're doing a good job here. Motion carries, thank you very much. So we are on, uh, council item, agenda item 69, and then 70. 69, VAR 53490, a request for variance to allow a nine-foot side yard setback and a residential adjacency setback where 10 feet is minimum required, and to allow a trash enclosure zero feet from a residentially zoned property where feet, 50 feet is, uh, minimum required. And agenda item 70, SDR 53491, a request for major amendment to site development plan review, SDR 19330, for proposed 1,321-square-foot building. The applicant, his applicant owner is Carlos Ave Maria on .61 acres at 5,200 Vegas Drive. Staff recommends denial, and planning commission recommends approval on both items. These items are C1, limited commercial zone. These items are in Ward Five with Councilman Barlow. They are public hearing items which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, sir.
And you are the applicant or the?
I am the owner, Carlos Ave Maria.
Thank you very much. And so, uh, let's turn it right over to you first, Mr. Fag, if you would, go forward.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I do need to make one correction. It is advertised in the notice that the trash enclosure will be zero feet away from a residential property. However, in subsequent discussions with the applicant, the trash enclosure is going to be positioned adjacent to the office building, uh, and so it will stay in that location, so that way it's at least more or less equidistant away from the residential properties. Uh, and so I just wanted to make sure that that correction was clear on the record today.
So that would put it, is that the, uh, item on the right of this photograph?
No, actually, what's being shown in this photo is the storage structure which the applicant has constructed on the property.
Okay. All right, is there anyone wishing to be heard on these items? Please come forward. Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public, uh, portion, and Councilman Barlow.
Thank you. Hey, uh, Flynn, there was two items on yesterday that we discussed, one being the trash enclosure as far as the variance and the setback, so it sounds like that has been adjusted, and I, and I know we had, had a conversation in regards to, um, Republic Services being able to pick up. So, that is completely addressed?
Yes, that is completely addressed.
Okay, and the second was, um, was it under the SDR?
Yes, under the SDR. It's the variance that's needed for the storage structure that the applicant has constructed and backed.
Okay, so we, so we'll address that. Secondly, so the, so the variance here is in regards to the trash structure for 69?
Uh, the trash enclosure was covered under item- The trash enclosure was covered under Item sixty-nine, but also the setback variance is covered under Item sixty-nine as well.
For the trash enclosure?
For the trash enclosure and for the storage structure. The storage structure is required to be ten feet away from the property line. It was constructed nine feet away from the property line, so it's a one-foot variance.
And so you've had an opportunity to look at that?
Yes, we have been there on the site.
And you all are okay with that?
We had originally recommended denial because it didn't meet the setback requirement.
Well, right, but in the scheme of things, we're talking about one-foot difference?
Correct.
Okay. Then I'll move to approve this item subject to all conditions. Item sixty-nine.
And you are in agreement with those conditions?
Um, yes, of course.
Okay. Thank you. This motion, please vote. This is on Agenda Item sixty-nine. That motion carries. And Councilman Barlow on Agenda Item seventy?
And on Agenda Item seventy, Flynn, if you don't mind just speaking to that as far as the structure itself?
Again, the second item, Item number seventy, is a site plan to account for the additional structure on the property. The variance for the structure was already addressed under the previous item.
Okay. And so, with that, I'll move to approve this item seventy, subject to all conditions.
To which you also agree.
Yes.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck. Okay, Agenda Item seventy-one, seventy-two. Seventy-one, SUP five-three-three-oh-three, a request for a major amendment to approve, to an approved special use permit, U zero-zero-zero-seven-dash-nine-eight, for a forty-five-hundred square foot expansion of an existing church house of worship. And Agenda Item seventy-two, SDR five-three-three-zero-two, a request for a site development plan review for forty-five-hundred square foot expansion of an existing, I don't know, what's the difference there? Just the numbers? Oh, it's a site development plan. The applicant owner is Living Word Christian Church, on point-nine-five acres, located twelve-oh-two Vista Drive. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval on both items. These items are in RE, Residence Estate Zone. These items are in Ward One with Councilwoman Tarkanian, are public hearing items which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes. LeVar Short Frontier Builders. I'm the general contractor, representing the church.
Welcome. Anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this item, please come forward, state your name.
My name's Hodges. It's a church in it, and the church is a good thing for the community, so good luck building it, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Fag, any comments herein, please?
Staff would just say that the proposed addition to the property conforms with zoning requirements, so staff has recommended approval. However, we do have a condition change, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson to address that issue.
Please.
Hello, Bart Anderson with Public Works. A neighbor had expressed some concern over potential disruption to their property if a sewer easement that goes across their property was accessed. And so in working with that neighbor, we've modified Condition Number Ten, which requires connection to public sewer for this site, and I'd like to read in the modified condition to replace existing Condition Number Ten. This site shall connect to public sewer at a depth and location acceptable to the sanitary sewer section of the Department of Public Works, and shall coordinate with the property owner to the south if utilizing the adjacent public sewer easement. This site shall abandon the individual sewage disposal system according to the Southern Nevada Health District regulations concurrent with onsite development activities.
And are you in agreement with that condition?
Yes, I am. I had a chance to meet with them this last week and sit down and explain to them what I had learned from the sewer department, and that is that that's their, that's the right-of-way, that's owned by the city, and we would not be encroaching on that at all. We have a demising fence that goes down the line, and there was a question with them whether or not that was owned by the church, or whether, you know, we may have, we probably will have to breach that fence to get to the, to get to the right-of-way so we can attach to the sewer. They're really, and I made them aware, that anything that we did to the curb that they have, or if we had to cut in the asphalt, would all be replaced and brought up to the code that it was in pre-existing condition.
At their cost.
Yeah, at the church's cost.
At the church's cost. Their cost, correct. And they were in agreement?
And so we would take, we would take care of anything that we encroach on. We're just asking, now, just so you know, that's Hebrew school, I think, right there next to them. When their building was built down this way, they have a jog-out, and that jog-out is what's causing the problem, you know, for them, because they had to build over and give the right-of-way to the city, and so it tightened up the, the street running by there, and I said, "We can work around all of that. I have no problem." And I think we can leave it in pre-existing condition without any problems at all, but we are going to have to probably accents down in underneath to the sewer, which is in the right-of-way. So we don't anticipate being on that property at all.
Were you on a septic tank before?
Yes.
All those years?
Yeah, that goes away. So we're tying into the new sewer system entering Al Vista.
Okay. And so you're in agreement with all the conditions that Mr. Fag and Mr. Anderson, well, just read in?
I am. I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear all of them, but I think my explanation probably is covering that. My right.
Mayor, through you, that, that is the intention of the condition, that they make sure they coordinate with and don't interfere with the existing neighbor to the south. They can access the sewer if necessary, but they have to coordinate with the neighbor and make sure that everybody is, is happy with the location they're tying in.
Right. And do you need evidence of that having happened? In which case, if you do, could he have a copy of what he didn't quite hear to make sure that he has a written?
Absolutely. I'll give him a written copy, and they will be submitting construction plans that will show where the sewer is, and we'll be reviewing those plans to ensure that it is not adversely affecting the neighbor.
Great. Anyone else on the public hearing before I turn this over to Councilwoman Tarkanian? There's a question. I'm going to close the public hearing, and Councilman Coffin, please?
I just had a question for Minister Lamar. Are you hard of hearing? Do you have difficulty hearing? Because you could not hear all the provisions that were read into the record.
He just supplied me with, with what he was telling me about the provisions, but...
I know, but are you using a hearing device to assist you?
No. No, I'm sorry. I apologize for that.
Your ears are cold. Okay, I should have known.
Yeah, so are my legs.
Okay. I heard it's cold out there. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilwoman, please.
I think this, first, I wanted to tell you that your neighbors are very pleased you're coming in and are there to welcome you as you work together in the community, and the only thing this condition, the little slight change to Condition Number Ten does, is it states that you shall coordinate with the property owner to the south, which is the Habad, and you said that's what you intend to do. So I was, I'm gathering from that that that's okay with you.
It is. Yes.
It is. Okay. And there's a copy of it.
And you have a copy of it? You just read it?
I do. And, but, but I've been, I've worked diligently to make sure that they were aware of what our plans were, had a meeting with the rabbi, and we went out and walked the, the project prior to my coming here, so that we both understood. And all I said is, if for any unknown reason we have to encroach on any of the curbing or a little bit of the asphalt, that's our cost to replace that and put it back in like-kind and quality.
And he knows that, and, and you'd be working with him, so everything would be coordinated through him, and he'd be giving you permission to rip up, if you had to rip up, because you're going to replace.
Yeah, we'll do everything.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
I see another lady there. I don't know if she's speaking on this...
No, she's on a different item.
Oh.
I think. Are you on Agenda Item seventy-one? I thought you were at end.
I'm sorry, I was just wondering about this, um, did you put that on satellite's point of view, or how did you take a picture of it?
How do you take a picture of it?
How did planning get the picture?
Oh, good question. How did we get that, Mr. Fag?
Madam Mayor, that's an aerial photo.
It's an aerial.
Is that anything you do with satellites with, like, you thinking on, like, NASA-type stuff?
No.
No, no.
Okay. I have to, like, have this meeting short, and I have to go to another meeting. May I leave this on yours or Councilman?
Yes, if you'll just give it to our city clerk, that'll be fine. Thank you very much.
Some subject matters I want to be addressed in the next, in the future meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a great day.
Thanks.
Thank you, Council.
Bye. Okay, so Councilwoman?
I move to approve as amended in the condition.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. And this is on Agenda Item seventy-one. Don't go away. And please post. Motion carries. Now on Agenda Item seventy-two.
I, I move to approve.
Your right.
I do that all the time. Sorry. I move to approve.
There's a motion to approve Agenda Item number seventy-two.
And this one would be as amended.
As, as amended in Condition Ten.
And there's a motion. Please vote. And please post. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item seventy-three. Okay. SUP five-three-three-five-two, public hearing, applicant, Las Vegas Billboards, owner gives family trust for possible action or request for a special use permit for a proposed off-premise sign at one-one-one-one, unless I gave you too many ones, A Street. This is M Industrial Zone, and Councilman Barlow's Ward Five. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. Are you the applicant or representative?
Applicant.
And your name, please?
Chad Harris, Las Vegas Billboards.
Thank you very much.
Las Vegas Billboards is a small, family-owned, local company. We're here to request your approval of this off-premise digital sign. This digital sign has state-of-the-art technology to dim at night to ease the ambient lighting. This billboard is more than just a digital science community message center. We have partnered with many charities to promote awareness and raise donations, the likes of Shade Tree, Opportunity Village, Three Square, Goodwill, and last but not least, Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, to assist them in fighting crime, catching violent criminals, and Amber Alerts. Our partner, Raleigh Gibbs, in this project, is owner of the property, is lifelong Las Vegasan, a pillar of the community. In closing, we meet all the requirements set forth by the City of Las Vegas. Staff and Planning Commission have approved this project, and we humbly request the same of your counsel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item, so I'm going to open it up to the public, and if you will state your name, please?
My name is Raleigh Gibbs, and seven-three-four-five Laredo Street, and we've owned that property. My folks bought that in nineteen forty, and that's why I thought that it would be appropriate to put a sign on my part of the property. So...
Wonderful.
That's why we wanted to apply for...
And we appreciate all that you do and the donations. I mean, that is really for the nonprofits here in town. It's great.
I didn't hear you.
I just wanted to compliment you on all the donations that are made for supporting our nonprofits here in town. It's really commendable.
Thank you. It's my part and pleasure.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to come forward and speak on, on or against this? Please step forward and state your name for the record.
For the record, my name is Jay Ewing. I'm here to, on behalf of Ewing Brothers and the Rexey Ewing Junior Trust, and I am here in opposition of the sign on, or the Agenda Item number seventy-three.
And do you want to make any statement as to why?
I would like to submit for the record. I got packets for each one of you.
Okay, well, or you can just give them to our city clerk?
The first packet is a proof of state tag on the sign that is on my father's trust property, recognized as an off-premise sign. The sign that is being proposed is, does not meet the regulation of the city or the state for adding another off-premise sign. The second, or I've also got proof of payment where we've been paying state tags...
Excuse me? Maybe he can hand those up to you so that you can look while he's going through them?
There's a total of seven.
And, Mr. Fag, if I may ask you, in the Planning Commission and everything that has proceeded up to this point, have you reviewed these and seen these?
Yes, we did receive a copy of Mr. Ewing's documents at the Planning Commission meeting, and I have reviewed those, and if there's questions, I'll speak to those later after the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, now if he wants to explain exactly what the items are or the documents are.
Okay. So if you want to continue on this with that?
This second item here is about two and a half years ago, Las Vegas Billboards came to us and asked if they could build us a on-premise sign on our property, basically in lieu of us relinquishing our state tag for our billboard sign or off-premise sign. Nothing ever happened on that, and soon after they, I think filed bankruptcy, and I never heard anything else on it until I did some research on this Agenda Item and found out that they were basically trying to deem our off-premise billboard sign an on-premise sign, therefore, their proposed sign would meet the regulation of the city. And what I'm saying, as far as we're concerned, our billboard is still an off-premise sign that's advertised for the corporation and produces revenue for the trust. So, and then the third item is a summary of the history on the sign, and where the sign was used as an off-premise sign for advertising Silver Nugget Casino for a long period of time.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
If approved by the City Council, we'd meet all state requirements for the billboard sign, for equal separation from the sign question. For as long as we've known, it's been Ewing Brothers sign, advertising Ewing Brothers sign, considered an on-premise sign.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Please come forward, state your name.
Your honor?
Yes. Yes?
I think I need a real quick tutorial if I could admit my ignorance on this publicly. So, please, staff, quickly outline the difference between on-premise, off-premise, and the advantages, disadvantages, so I get a better idea about what we're talking about, because it sounds like off-premise signs means advertising for third parties, on-premise maybe means, you know, your own business.
Madam Mayor, through you. I'll go ahead and respond to that. An on-premise sign is a sign that advertises goods, services, or products that may be available on the site on which the sign is located. An off-premise sign, or a billboard, as it's commonly called, is a sign that advertises goods and services that are not available on the site on which the sign is located. The city has requirements for billboard signs in terms of separation from each other, and so that's one of the distinctions of an off-premise sign. And so that's one of the issues that's at hand today, is separation from other signs. Here along the freeway, off-premise signs have to be a minimum of seven-hundred-and-fifty feet apart, and so that's one of the issues at hand that will be discussed here today.
Okay, so there's a distance difference as well as contention, it sounds like, about whether it's off-premise or on-premise, and did the Planning Commission have a full hearing and hear all these, hear both sides, hear the testimony in full?
Yes, they did. They received the documentation submitted by Mr. Ewing, and then also heard from the applicant and made their decision accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, I'll continue on. Anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item, please come forward and state your name for the record.
May I say one more thing?
Certainly.
To give you an example, the Palace Station signs owned by Station Casinos, they're considered off-premise signs by the state and have state tags, yet they're considered on-premise signs by the City of Las Vegas because they advertise Station Casinos, Palace Stations boards. So I might give you some further clarification.
Okay, thank you. All right, hearing no one else and seeing no one else come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. And now at this point, I would ask Mr. Pack to please go on and explain.
Let me speak just a little bit about Mr. Ewing's sign and the reason that we've recommended as we have on this application. The City of Las Vegas did a survey of all off-premise signage back in 2005. The primary purpose of that is we have a number of signs, off-premise signs, that were constructed and permitted prior to the requirement that the city established for having a special use permit for all off-premise signs, and also prior to the establishment of separation distance requirements between off-premise signs. In 2005, the sign on Mr. Ewing's property was advertising Ewing Brothers Towing. Since the towing business did extend across that site, we deemed it at that point in time to be an on-premise sign. And again, as Mr. Ewing's documentation shows, the sign was legally established, and so it is a legally non-conforming sign. It was built and used prior to the requirement for a special use permit or any separation distance requirements. So that issue was not in question at all. It was our determination that because it had been used for on-premise messages, it was an on-premise sign. That is the basis for us bringing this application forward, accepting the application from Mr. Gibbs, and recommending as we did. I will say this about Mr. Ewing's documentation that he provided to us. He has given an indication that he has been paying an NDOT tag fee for an off-premise sign. Now, while NDOT does not have any control over local land use, you all are the ones who have control over land use, I think that does help to add to his case that perhaps this could be considered an off-premise sign. Now, that's not a determination that I can make as the planning director, I think that's something that an attorney would need to establish that fact. But that does call into question if he has been paying those fees to NDOT for an off-premise sign, would a court of law see that as being an off-premise sign as opposed to our determination that it was an on-premise sign? So, again, his documentation does establish that.
Was that our role to determine that through attorney consultation?
It's not. It has to do with what our particular rules say that it is. I mean, I think the state may call it something different than we would call it, but I think that our rules are going to be the one that actually governs this particular issue. But that'd be probably up to a court of law to make that determination, but I would think that our rules would be the ones that are in control at this point.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Anthony?
So, Brian or Flynn, so could Mr. Ewing put up a Coca-Cola sign on that, at that location tomorrow?
Under the determination that we made back in 2005, the answer would be no, because it's too close to another off-premise sign. Again, he's produced documentation that seems to indicate that it has been used for off-premise purposes, so we would need some attorney to be able to determine that for us.
So, Brian, can you tell me that?
Well, I mean, it's going to be hard to make that determination at this point, Councilman, just because of the fact that he's used it for that purpose doesn't mean it was a lawful purpose. So it may be one of those situations where he was using it that way, we just didn't catch it, and we never, never even questioned it, because we, it maybe looked like an off-premise sign, acted like an off-premise sign. We have a lot of these signs in the older areas of town which look like off-premise signs, but don't currently meet our requirements. And until we get that type of complaint saying, hey, he's advertising something on his on-premise sign that's off-premise, we would have never caught it, so.
So, if he put up a Coca-Cola sign tomorrow?
And we never caught it?
Then you would conduct some kind of a, you would look at it and you could, or you could come back and say it's an off-premise sign?
No, if he put it up illegally, we could, code enforcement would tell him to take it down because it's an on-premise sign that he's using as an off-premise sign. So, he may have been using it all this time, and I don't remember when Flynn said this was actually erected. Was it, what year?
See, I believe it was 1973.
Right. And see, back then, I don't know what our requirements were for off-premise versus on-premise signs, so.
So, are you, are you, are you saying today that this is an on-premise sign? This is officially an on-premise sign, and he cannot put Coca-Cola up there?
For purposes of the City of Las Vegas, it is an on-premise sign, and he could not use it for off-premise purposes.
Okay, Councilman Ross, question, comment?
No, Mayor Protem's asking some very good questions. I'm concerned, however, that Mr. Ewing, for many, many, many years, has thought of this sign as being an off-premise sign. And had he not known that we viewed it that way, I'm sure he would have done something different. Certainly don't want to take away from Mr. Gibbs' position on this either, but this is a serious, serious concern. You paying the state this fee for as many years as you have been, in your mind, this has been an off-premise sign all along, am I correct, Mr. Ewing?
Yes. In fact, it has been talked in the past, even before this application came out, about doing improvements to the sign and making it a two-faced sign where it had a north side and a south side.
Okay. And Councilman, I don't know if we know if he's paying that off-premise fee to the state as a result of it being in close proximity to the freeway? Is that what, is that why you're paying that fee, or?
As far as we know, when that sign was built, that was all, that was all that was required was to pay the state fee, the state tag fee, permit fee.
Because it could be because it's, I don't know if the freeway was erected during that in 1973. Was that freeway there along that corridor during 1973?
Yeah, I'm sure the freeway was.
So it may have been a fee for actually being adjacent to a freeway as a result, and not necessarily, because I don't think the state concerns itself whether
They don't.
The property that he owns is off-premise or on-premise, so.
They don't, and through the mayor, I don't believe they do. But here, here is a property owner with a sign on his property. Could be Mr. Ewing, could be anybody, could be Councilman Beers. And for decades, they're under the assumption that they have an off-premise sign and can advertise to Coca-Cola if they so choose to. Then comes another, a sign company and another property owner adjacent wanting to do the same thing, and finding out all of a sudden, wow, that's just not the case. That just doesn't sit right with me. So I'm concerned about that position for Mr. Ewing, and of course, you know, Mr. Gibbs, anything that, you know, I support property owners' rights and doing what they want to do with their property, certainly. We have these distance separations in there for a reason, so this just doesn't sit well with me at all. I mean, not to slow Mr. Gibbs down, but I mean, for the benefit of Mr. Ewing, this is a pretty sad situation that this guy's in, that I don't know if it slipped through the cracks in decades past, I mean, long before any of us got here, but it could be anybody, thinking they've got a sign that they can advertise off-premise, and all of a sudden, one day, another applicant comes in and says, no, no you don't. That's what concerns me here. So, I don't know if I can support this.
And Councilman, now that we know that through Flynn's research that it's not an off-premise sign, if he tried to advertise on that sign now, I'm assuming Flynn that we would prevent him, or code enforcement would prevent him from actually advertising off-premise, since we know now that it doesn't meet our off-premise requirements? And Flynn, you can correct me on that, I don't know if I can correct that.
Again, that's what we've determined, but there are a couple of items that call that into question, so we would need some direction on that point.
So, with this as it is, and it's in Councilman Barlow's ward, how say you? Okay, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just need a couple of questions answered, because they are not in the backup material, it would make sense that they wouldn't be. For example, since staff and the planning commission did not consider the Ewing sign to be an off-premise sign, they did not include the data about exactly how far it is to the off, the Ewing sign. So what is the distance from the proposed location of Raleigh's sign to the Ewing Brothers' sign right now? What is the distance existing right, where it would propose to be, be proposed? What is the distance?
I'm going to attempt to guess, because I don't have GIS available here to me right now, that the distance would be approximately 400 feet.
400. And then in the backup material, it says that the nearest off-premise sign as determined by planning and the commission was 800 feet or more than 800 feet away? Do we have a, do we have a firm number on that?
Yes, we do. In fact, the map that is showing on the display right now shows the next off-premise sign to the north at 1405 A Street.
Okay, so that's outside the 750?
Correct.
And, okay, because I was thinking that the green might have been the Ewing Brothers' sign.
No, no, the Ewing Brothers sign is midway.
Then the Ewing Brothers on or off-premise sign is somewhere in this hatch, cross-hatched area? Well, closer, you say 400 plus from, has there been any discussion, I guess, knowing this, in these distances? Are they all the same size? At least the sign that the Ewings have up, is that the same size as is proposed for this one and the other one that's north?
I don't know the dimensions of the existing Ewing Brothers' sign, the one to the north, I'm assuming is a standard 14 by 48-foot billboard sign.
And that's what's contemplated to be built here on this one?
I believe so, yes.
Although it's digital. Is the one on the far north digital, electronic? You'll see where I'm going here in a second. They're all static, but apparently this one's coming. Okay, I was thinking, and I don't know, has there, have there been discussions? We're now here at the decision point, but have there been discussions of a compromise between you folks? And I don't know. Pardon?
Mr. Gibbs said he didn't.
We had a meeting two and a half years ago. Okay, so Raleigh, you didn't know?
It wasn't with Raleigh.
Yeah.
It wasn't with Raleigh.
Okay, so Guy, you and he haven't had a discussion recently?
No.
You probably never had a discussion with the person who's 800 feet away, because you would not think a need to, right?
Correct.
Okay. I, since there's a lot of money involved in here, so it's northbound I-15 traffic, right? That's a lot of, lot of people. So I want to make sure we do the right thing. It may require some compromising, and only the council can do that. I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mayor, but at least I got some distances. That's what I needed to know, because sometimes spatial relationships, directional relationships can affect the visual aspect, as a driver might see it.
May I?
You're the expert?
No, sir, but just to answer one of your questions possibly, we think we meet, we're about 530 feet from the Ewing Brothers' sign. Because they have a state tag, there's a 500-foot spacing requirement required by NDOT, and we would meet that 500-foot separation for NDOT purposes.
So you think it's 530 feet to the Ewing sign from where your proposed location would be?
To the Ewing Brothers.
On Raleigh's property, is there a distance further away? So you're, for example, showing the Delta sign on the north line of that property, is this the actual place?
Yes, sir. You have trees to the south, they're on the state property, right away, building, it's a little triangular parcel to the south of our sign.
So you're saying then putting it on the south line would not be feasible?
The trees would obstruct, the trees would obstruct, yeah.
At any height?
Right. It would be, have to be enormously tall.
They're that high, huh?
Yeah, old pine trees.
Okay, thanks for the information, that helps. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. And this has been a very tough item to research and climb through, Mayor and Council, because there's a lot of technical pieces, and there's still a number of unanswered questions, specifically on the staff side, that, as you can see, even with counsel, not knowing some of the facts that have been brought forward. And based on the research that I've done, I believe, as of today, that Mr. Ewing is accurate. I believe that the documentation that he has been able to at least administer to the council and share with my office, compared to the information that I was able to research and the lack of research that we were able to capture from the history of when the sign was erected, as well as the time in which the sign had off-premise, because at one point it did have off-premise signage, until a future date, they basically changed the signage to advertise their business, but also in the midst of the trust owning the sign. And Mr. Scott, you can answer this question. If the trust owns the sign, could not their secondary business rent from the trust and advertise their name on that sign?
Sure, almost, it'd be almost like if they incorporated, somebody could rent from the incorporated, and then, yeah, correct.
And so with that, and with the information that the Ewings have brought before this council, I would have to side with the Ewings on that technical piece. And so for that, I would have to move to deny the request of the applicant, based on the fact that I truly believe at this point that Mr. Ewing and their trust is accurate in relation to this being an off-premise sign. So my motion would be to deny the application moving forward.
Can I make a request?
And that was
At this point, or a suggestion?
A tough decision for me to come to, by the way.
I know. And listening to, and that, of course, for all of us sitting here that haven't been privy to this information.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm wondering, one, because there's obviously legal, further legal involvement, and who has the superiority, the city or the state or NDOT? And is there any opportunity for further dialogue to see if there's something that can be done, maybe perhaps move that sign further south? Is there a way to mediate all of this and to give them the time for further? Because you had mentioned there'd been no dialogue for a couple of years, correct?
Well, the thing of it is, Mayor, is that if in fact, for example, the Ewings are accurate, even with moving the sign, they would have to move their sign over 400 feet, which will basically put them out
200 feet, only 200 feet, less than 200.
Well, the separation from billboard to billboard is 750 feet.
Right.
So therefore, today, where the Ewing signs sit, which is between the green and the red, the red would have to move south over 400 feet, which would place them out in Washington somewhere, in order to meet, in order for the purple to get out of the green shaded area.
That's
Okay, and so, and so I would rather them work that out, as far as being, as far as the assessors and working with staff and coming back with a different model, but not to belabor this item before, I believe as of today, the facts lean on the Ewing side in relation to that being an off-premise sign.
Where I was going with my comments was, you do not think there's any advantage to, you know, to mediate this, therefore obey it, and try and encourage the conversation, give them the time to look at distance requirements, but to be able, since the conversation hasn't happened in two years anyway.
Right.
And with the approval of planning and our staff on the other side of this, I didn't, my suggestion would be to obey it and give them a month to see what they do with it.
I'll be happy to do that. I don't, I don't have a problem doing, doing that either.
Okay. I mean, and encouraging the conversation and getting whoever has legal and to be in touch, of course, with our city staff, because obviously they've been in approval, but it's up to Councilman.
Say something. This property that my folks bought in 1940 is now right across the streets where all the homeless live, right against the wall of the highway. And that's why I thought maybe I could get something out of this property by putting a sign up, because they use my fence for their urinal every day, and it stinks so bad over there, you can hardly get my gate. And this is why I thought maybe I could get something out of this, where it's turned into a ghetto over there, it's terrible.
Well, we'd like to help correct that, too. But everything, as you know, we move slowly.
And as a property owner, he has a responsibility as well to help mitigate a lot of the problems in the area as well, so it won't be a ghetto.
Well, they're right up against the wall, that's a freeway.
Mayor, my motion stands.
Okay, so you are going to deny on this, your motion is to deny.
Mayor, maybe we just make one last request to obey this item. Councilman Barlow, so we may mediate this.
Okay. There's, what was your, I'm so sorry, your request?
Councilman, sir? Barlow, Mr. Barlow? Councilman Barlow, may I request to obey this item, so we can mediate with the Ewing Brothers' sign to the north, and hopefully come to resolution of course for both parties, please?
Mayor, I just want to get something straight from, from the gentleman. What did you mean by ghetto?
Well, the homeless sleep right across the street from my yard. I mean, they're lined up there against the wall on the freeway, and they use my fence for the urinal, it stinks so bad over there. I called your office and talked to a gentleman there and asked you if you could come over and fumigate the thing, and that was four months ago.
But let me share, let me share something with you, okay?
Pardon?
Just let me share something with you. The city as a whole has been working very diligently, whether it be on A Street or Foremaster in Maine, each and every day to address these issues, okay? So, we do our very best to mitigate a lot of these issues. So we do our very best to mitigate a lot of these issues, but it's not a one-way street. It's not a matter of you just calling my office and saying, what are you going to do about this? This is a collective effort, just as the Ewing's work with me in relation to the same issue that you're bringing before this council, but to disrespect the city in that sense, and specifically my warden, and talk about a ghetto, I take offense to that, because we work very diligently every day in order to bring this area up, to make sure that business owners such as yourself and others in this community continue to conduct their way of business. If there was something that this city could have done in regards, or do in regards to the homeless in this area, it would have been done prior to me sitting on this council. And many councils before me, to include myself, continue to work to try to address these issues. But one thing that I'm not going to take is for someone to come and basically dump on my ward and call it a ghetto, because it's not a ghetto. There's a lot of great taxpayers such as yourself that, that have been paying taxes a long time to improve the quality and the integrity of this community. So when you talk about ghetto, I mean, I take offense to that.
What can I do to improve that? How can I move those people off the street that sleep there constantly?
So, Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll obey this item, I'll obey this item thirty days, and give them an opportunity to have a conversation between, uh, between the staff and Mr. Ewing...
Public comments closed, sorry.
Mr. Ewing and the applicant, and I look forward to a healthy conversation coming back forward to see how we can move this item forward. But just know that with the limited amount of information that I have before me and the research that has been brought forward to this council, I would have to, as of today, side with the Ewing and the trust in relation to the documentation that they've been able to prove in relation to the on-premise, off-premise. So my motion would be to obey thirty days. Thank you, Mayor.
Which will put us at what, please, Mrs. Barlow?
July sixteenth.
July?
Sixteenth.
This is obeyed till July sixteenth. If it passes, there's a motion been made to obey, and hopefully you will use the time, please vote and please post, use the time productively and look at your alternatives. We certainly understand what you're talking about. This has been a city issue for a long, long time in different parts of the city, and understanding, you know, I, I feel Councilman Barlow works so hard, and he, I think, misinterpreted, knowing you, what you are saying in what, what is occurring on that piece of property. And, but rightly so, he's made his point very, very clear. So the key is to move forward at this time, get everybody involved, look at other locations, perhaps in that area, and see what the distance is, but certainly work with our staff, who I'm sure are amenable, and, and Councilman Barlow. So, did we post? Unanimous, so, thank you very much. We will see you on the sixteenth of July. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
One month? Oh, thirty days.
Yeah, July sixteenth.
That's okay, July sixteenth. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Beverly Bridges City Clerk, can we take a five-minute recess? We have a difficulty with the recording, and I want to see if I can fix it really quickly.
Okay, thank you. We're having difficulty with the recording, so maybe it's back there with you all. We will take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Test, two, three, four. Okay, can you hear this being recorded? There should be like a six-second delay, so I'll keep counting, A, B, C, D, E, F, G. You can hear it starting then?
Okay, councilperson, return to the fold. Are you sitting in a new seat, or am I, councilwoman? One, two, three, I need one more. One loyal soul. I must tell you that Councilman Anthony has been excused. He's served a long time today, I'm very proud, so one, two, three, four, here we go. Agenda, what are we on now? No, public, you have to wait to the end, I'm sorry. You, no, I'm sorry, you can't. Okay, SUP seven, this is agenda item seventy-four. SUP five-three-four-three-six, public hearing, applicant Mariscos El Puerto, Inc., owner, Lake Mead Decatur, LLP, for possible action, and a request for special use permit for beer-wine cooler, on-sale establishment within a proposed twenty-six-hundred-thirty-two-square-foot restaurant with four-hundred-thirty-four square feet of outdoor seating at nineteen-oh-one North Decatur Boulevard, C-one limited commercial zone, this is in Ward five with Councilman Barlow. Both the, planning and staff recommend approval. It's a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, we're the applicant. My name is Keith Grimes. This is Manuela Hernandez, she's the owner, and this is her son Hector, and he's here to help with translation if necessary.
Wonderful, wonderful, thank you very much. So let's, uh, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Hearing none, I'm gonna close public hearing. And do we need any explanation, Mr. Fag, from your end?
The item is in order, and staff has recommended approval, as has the planning commission.
Thank you very much. Clear sailing, Councilman Barlow.
Mayor, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval and look forward to continuing to come over and visit your restaurant and enjoy the great food you have to offer.
Thank you very much.
All right?
Okay, there's motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries, good luck.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, agenda item seventy-five, SUP five-three-four-six-eight, public hearing, applicant, whoops, Sai Young Yee, owner, Miguel Family Trust, nineteen ninety-three at Al, for possible action and a request for a special use permit for proposed beer-wine cooler on-sale establishment use within a fourteen-hundred-eighty-four-square-foot portion of an existing sixty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty-three-square-foot swap meet, with a waiver to allow a hundred-and-seven-foot distance separation from a house of worship, where four hundred feet is required at fifteen-sixty-northeast in C-one limited commercial zone, this is in Ward three with Councilman Coffin. Both planning and staff recommend denial. It's public hearing, I declare it open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Representative, my name is Jeff Yee, also stakeholder in the restaurant and the swap meet itself, I'm a manager there.
Okay.
Um, I, I manage both the restaurant and the swap meet. My father is the owner, and I'm representing him, he would, was not able to be here today. If I may direct you guys, direct the council to the overhead, I would like to address the issue at hand, which is the hundred-and-seven-foot waiver of the, um, the distance from, um...
Do you want to point to that?
Sure.
Oh, maybe, oh, there you can, yeah. So what is the issue here?
So, the, the issue here is that there is a, so this is facing north this way, yeah, here we go.
Which is north now?
Um, right here. North is this way.
Okay.
So here is the church here, and this is the property line of the, the Eastern Owen Shopping Plaza. And I would like to hopefully address this issue that there, the hundred-and-seven-foot distance is between these two property lines here, and I, I'm considering this matter, I don't, uh, we have a four-hundred-fifty-foot approximately of space in the parking lot, and another approximate two-hundred-foot space to get to, even reach the restaurant.
Okay.
So to address that issue, I, um, we feel that there's enough space, that four-hundred-foot space is there, just not from property to the line, property line. So I'm asking, or I'm hoping, I'm pleading with the...
Could you point to where the, the house of worship is specifically with your finger?
The house of worship is right here.
The, to your, um, the pink piece, or...
Yes, it's either, I think it's...
But your head's there.
It's this, it's this, um, it must be this one, actually, because, oh, this one, actually, because it is a small church, a lot of people can't, can't even find it. I had to like be on foot to actually go through the alleyways and find it. It's a small Pentecostal church, and we're, um, we're asking the, the council to give us the opportunity to revive the swap meet, because it is under new management now. Um, we have, we also have a petition here from thirty-seven vendors in, out of the forty-five that we have currently, um, supporting the, the special use permit to attract and generate traffic to the swap meet, um, through, through this, um, through the special use permit, but also have the ability to create some more small businesses, because with, it'll attract people to be inside, um, start, start their business inside the swap meet.
What are the, uh, what's the cross, what's the street immediately to the east? What's that boulevard, please?
To the east, that is, um...
If you go back to that diagram you had up before, before we put the names here?
This one?
Yes, and if you look...
To the east here is, um, the major, the, the next major cross street is Pecos.
Okay. So on the south is eastern, right here. The way you've got it tipped, it's not north-south, right? No, it is. Eastern on the west, and Owens here. Oh, okay. Okay. Oh. Okay, thank you. Okay, and your proposed beer-wine is in that little hatch area?
Exactly, actually, it is in this corner, right here. Oh, this...
Well, you're, it's already hatched right there, yeah, we see it on our diagram.
Yep, just like that.
Yeah, it shows, on the other diagram it showed.
And we're asking for the opportunity to, um, to give this, uh, to give this proposed special use permit a shot, um, in, in reviving the area, or, or particularly reviving the, the swap meet itself.
And the swap meet has opened already, or it is not open?
It's, it's open now, yes.
And operational on weekends only, or all the time?
No, uh, six days a week.
Six days a week?
Six days a week, from ten to seven, um, but we're actually proposing to, to make, to revive the place, where, and starting next month, we're gonna be, um, Fridays, Saturdays, we're gonna be open an hour later, for, from ten to eight.
Okay, all right.
And what's different about, well, this is, this is, this is an indoor swap meet, and we have, um, different entertainment value. We also host different community workshops. We, we're trying to increase exposure through different workshops with nonprofits such as Libra Initiative. Um, we're gonna, we're hosting the World Cup now, um, we want to have live music there. We want to hold dance classes there for the community as well, so, um, it's just all in an effort to generate traffic, generate exposure, and, and increase, um, increase sales, traffic for the vendors that we have, and to increase small businesses in, in the area.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this agenda item, please come forward. Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'd like to hear, and I'm sure we'd all like to hear, from you, Mr. Fag, as to why the denial.
Thank you very much. The applicant has already pointed out one of the issues that led staff and the planning commission to recommend denial of this item, that is the waiver from the church, as he's already pointed out. The other issue that was discussed and is indicated in our staff report is the ability to control the alcohol within the swap meet itself. This is a little bit different than when you have a standalone restaurant, where the patrons are confined to the restaurant and their consumption of the alcohol. The swap meet is a little bit different, it has an open arrangement, and so consequently, one of our reasons for recommendation of denial is due to the fact that it will be difficult for us to enforce the regulations relative to the consumption of alcohol on the premises.
And I might add, prior to their ownership, was this facility operative as a, um, as a similar project?
As a swap meet?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
And was there food or alcohol in there at that time?
No, there has not been alcohol there.
Okay. And would there be any... And would there be any conditions under which they could, if they moved where they're doing it, or closed it off with an exterior opening only to the, you know, to the outside? Were there any conditions under which they could achieve having this?
I think the preference of staff would be that it be a separate enclosed restaurant facility, and distinct from the rest of the swap meet area.
Thank you very much. I think I did close the public hearing, in fact, I'm sure I did. So, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. There's an atmospheric problem, I think, too, with it. In essence, the strolling around with liquor would be hard to contain, and I think that's a problem. And is it Jeff Yee?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Jeff. The measurements of property line to property line have been the rules in usage for many years. I grant you that Lake Mead is a busy street, and maybe, or maybe not, the congregation there would not notice, and so on. But the fact is, we've had a lot of, a lot of letters of protest from the people there. And I think it's from neighbors there, too. And perhaps they would not necessarily be affected. But I think, I think what you've heard from staff is the advice that I would give you, and that is that a contained restaurant, which would not have a problem, frankly, with beer and wine, would be preferable than to having essentially a kiosk where you dispense liquor, and then people walk around inside the swap meet and shop. That way, it would not be controlled, it could spill out into the parking lot, I think that's one of the problems.
Right. That's a valid, that's a valid concern, and that is exactly what we plan on doing, actually. It's like, just bury it, build a barrier where it says, "No drinks beyond this point." It would be inside of the restaurant. Only this particular, only this Delmar restaurant will be able to sell it. And if I can even propose a condition, if I, or the restaurant, or the swap meet does have a violation regarding this special use permit, I, we could, we'll personally revoke or rescind the special use permit. This is, it's, we just want the opportunity, or the chance, to see if we can make it happen. And if it does cause problems, we can rescind the plan or the proposal.
I might suggest to you, it's the cart before the horse, and sort of getting a feeling, even though he hasn't looked at me, or nor have I looked at him.
Sure.
But if, in fact, it is denied at this time, it doesn't mean you can't come back with a better plan, listening to what the councilmen's just suggested to you.
Sure.
So, rather than him going ahead and saying, "Sure, we'll do this," and then find out that was the wrong decision.
Right.
But know that there, for the future, you can come back. So, it's yours.
Yeah, Your Honor, I think you're on the right track there, because I think these are good businesspeople, and they have potential. I think there might be a way to set it up. I, I was prepared to just move for denial, based upon the fact that it had a unanimous denial...
Sure.
From the Planning Commissioners...
Right.
Who we trust to a great degree, and I suspect they have the same thoughts that have been expressed here today. But I tell you what...
Excuse me?
If you wish...
You may, I know how smart you are, sometimes.
Sometimes I'm stupid, too, Your Honor.
Sometimes. I was just advised by, since I had broached the comment, I was just advised by our attorney, if he's denied, he cannot come back for a year.
I know that.
Oh, see, you knew that. But if you withdraw your application...
Yes.
Then you'll come back earlier, and see, Councilman Coffin already knew this, because he's been, spent half of his life, if not more, up in Carson City.
Well, that doesn't teach you a thing, I can guarantee you, right now, up there, being in Carson City. Let me ask staff a question on this. If we, if he was, so there'd be no prejudice in the withdrawal, it would be, if he chose to withdraw, wouldn't be, would there be an additional application fee? A thousand dollars, or something to that effect?
Yes, he would need to refile the special use permit application, and provide new plans.
Yeah. Why don't we do this, rather than simply closing the door with a no vote? You heard that, there's a fee involved. But why don't you consider withdrawing this? And in that way, you can see that we're open-minded up here, we want to give you a shot, but not with this present configuration. So, if you want to think about that for a minute or two, or maybe just a few seconds, because you're the last item of the day. All I could say is, I think it would be well-served to withdraw it, have a meeting, I've not met you before.
Mm-hmm.
I haven't been on those premises, although my staff has.
Sure.
So, perhaps something could be worked out. Granted, there is that problem of the separation distance from the Pentecostals, that would also have to be discussed. But I think you should make sure that's done. So, on various levels, you're a loser today, if you, if we have a vote. But you would have the chance to come back and do something creative. Why don't we, why don't we do that?
So, if I withdraw this special use permit today, with the, at no cost, you're talking to me, or...
You would have to pay a fee for, the staff will tell you.
Right. And then, with the withdrawal today, I would be able to, in the future, open this permit back up, or...
Please explain.
Yeah, please, I need some clarification, sorry.
Let the staff explain.
Madam Mayor, what would be required? If the applicant were to withdraw the application without prejudice today, he would need to refile a new application, pay the application fees, which is approximately $1,200, but there is no waiting period to refile that application. As opposed to, if this special use permit is denied, as has been indicated, he would have to wait a year before he could refile an application.
And at that time, he would still have to pay another fee?
He would still have to pay the fee.
Okay.
With the same sort of disconcern about the 107-foot distance...
Well, hopefully, you would go into discussion meeting with Councilman Coffin, and get all the advice you could, as to what might be acceptable, and certainly what staff is going to want to see and hear from you.
And obviously, the church.
And obviously, the church.
The reason it's granted, the reason there's a distance requirement, Jeff, if we granted that, you could move it to the curb, then you'd really only be 107 feet away from the church with the liquor. Right now, I can, you make a good case, you're 500 feet away, probably, from the church, if you really put it in that building.
Sure.
But we wouldn't be able to control it, once we gave it to you. Well, we could, but you'd have an edge on us, we don't want to give up. So, what's your choice?
I feel that this, the same case would be happening in the future, and so I'd just rather get it over with now, and just go for motion, really. It's something, because we have, we have the option, as the restaurant owners, to keep going with this restaurant, or sell the restaurant, if someone is willing to buy it from us. So, if this does not, our sort of intuition was, if we did have the opportunity to sell, or be granted this special use permit, is that we would just kind of roll with it as well, and do the best we could. But if not, that opportunity would just have kind of gone...
Okay.
And just kind of let it be so on, put it on the market to be sold to anyone who might want to...
Thank you, Jeff, for your decision, then. I will move for denial.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote. Okay, and please post. Motion carries, which means denied.
All right.
Thank you.
Can you present?
Thank you. You made a nice presentation, though. Okay, Agenda Item Number 76, been obeyed till August 20th. So, we're on to Agenda Item 77. I instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates, and appeals from the city Planning Commission meetings, dangerous buildings, or nuisance litter abatements. Thank you, we will move on to Agenda Item 78. Citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, will be limited, and I'm going to limit it to three minutes. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda?
My name is Adam, and I just want to show you a couple items. One of them is a picture of a couple that I used to know, a young couple. Is he picking it up?
Ah, handsome dude.
I used to know them, I don't know who that is, but I used to know them.
I bet you did. You stayed trim, haven't you?
Now, I'm down to serious business.
Oh, love you.
The state of Nevada, when I moved here...
Nevada.
Okay, Nevada. Nah, Nevada, I'm sorry, forgive me, again. When I moved here, you only had one House of Representatives Congress lady, and that's who she was, that Barbara Venevich, whatever, I don't know how to pronounce it.
Kukanovich.
Yeah, whatever. But anyway...
Her grandson is a marshal with us.
Well, now, I know you got four, you know, House of Representatives, because, you know, Nevada, the state got bigger, and people, and whatever, you know.
Why, it's not wonderful.
Anyway, I want to say that, when I came here, with her being the owner, I watched the state pick up almost 2.5 million, you know, it really do some pretty heavy growing, you know. So, I'm kind of proud to be here, to watch the city, you know, grow, and, well, watch the whole west grow, you know, for that's concerned. But I have a special love for, you know, the city of Las Vegas and the area, and I'm sorry about pronouncing the great state in the wrong way, but I keep putting that, you know, in the wrong way, but it's, but I mean well, but I love the place. I've been here 28 years, so if I ain't learned by now, I'm going to be what you call...
We can always learn every single day of our lives, thank you.
Well, anyway, I just want to say thank you for letting me come down, and I did want to share this lady and that couple with you, I thought that two of them might be somewhat interesting. She's, I know she, I don't know if she's still living or not, or whatever.
No, she's passed away.
Okay. But anyway, I know we got full representatives now, right? So, you have grown quite a bit, right?
Yeah.
Okay, then, thanks for letting me have a word.
She was a great lady, thank you.
And everybody have a good day, and I'm sorry to do this, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Dorothy Barnes. I have a mailing address, appeal box 466, Las Vegas, and about 89125. That card I filled out earlier, it was for this portion, I got it in late and had it mixed up. But what I'm addressing you about today, I'm very concerned, this being a world-class city, and number one, maybe tourist attraction here, they're building a lot of stuff to draw people here, and I'm very concerned about this military base, and the problems I'm incurring with people being allowed out there, a security problem. And we're still at war. And this is a major thing, that we're still at war, and I'm a veteran of the U.S. Army. I see a security problem out there, just myself. And I've been yet robbed without a gun or knife. And these people that are out there, they're dealing drugs, and doing all kinds of stuff out there, and they say, "Well, that's a military base problem." You know, when I call different offices, even the governor's office I visited, and Senator Reed's office, and they say, "Well, that's a law enforcement problem, you should go to the police department." And then they'll say, "No, that's the military base, they have their own police," you know, and I know that. I had a brother who was ex-military policeman who was murdered concerning drugs, so I see that as a very serious problem. I don't know if you have any connections with the general, or high-ranking officials on the Ellis, to address this problem?
We have a brand-new Major General who's being sworn in next week.
Do you know him personally?
Not yet.
Do you have any connection with anyone that might have connections with him? Because I've called Inspector General's Office, and Office of Special Investigations, with no results in the past, and public, public, something public, Mr. Eugene somebody, and he hung up in my face once, but I was directed to him through Mr. Sharp, who works in Senator Reed's office, Public Affairs Office, and his attitude, but it's not my fault they let people out there that's mentally incompetent to go on the military base, with us having a terrorist threat, and being at war. I think it's a very bad security problem out there. And I want some people that's in authority, that may have some influence, to get some law and order out there, you know?
Well, I think our congresspersons that have offices here, you might want to give a call to Congressman Horstfer's office, or Congresswoman Titus's office, her office is on Charleston.
Very concerned about the safety of all residents and tourists, and who comes alike, thank you.
Thank you, very much. Okay, next, you waited a long day, and we appreciate it.
I should, I'm speaking in terms of, you mentioned military. Have you had any complaints, or are you aware of any conspiracy that's occurring here in Las Vegas, performed by people that are pretending to be part of the medical field? I don't know if you've heard of anything that's been secretly done to individuals in terms of, like, an eye-lens cataract or lasik surgery, or anything with a purpose to invade someone's privacy? Do you know anything of that sort? Has anyone heard any complaints?
I can ask council, has anybody heard anything? I have not, my office has not heard anything.
I've just had a few surgeries, and I just felt like my privacy was invaded, or that I wasn't treated quite well. Obviously, if you've had any personal complaints, because the police department said there's been no complaints over there on that end.
Not to our offices, anyway, and generally, if in fact council doesn't hear, I get it in the mayor's office, but nothing.
And another, is methamphetamine legal to use here, if we use privately at home?
Yes.
Yes, it is? Okay, perfect.
It's illegal.
It's legal.
Legal.
It is illegal.
It's legal to use.
It is illegal.
He said illegal.
Illegal? Okay, so we're going to work on that, maybe? Because I am, I'm actually a methamphetamine user, and it assists me with being focused, and it's better than Ritalin and Adderall. And I, my body doesn't interact well with pills, I've had issues with the way my stomach is. I just don't, I just don't see how...
We don't have dialogue with our public comment.
Excuse me?
Okay.
Pardon? Pardon? I just don't see why you guys would allow the, you know, the sale of liquor, and the sale of tobacco products. And I'm not a user of both, but I will support, however you would, you know, to consider narcotics as something that should be on the same subject matter as tobacco and liquor. I don't see why that is a problem to you. People are getting locked up for those types of, you know, for being a user, for being under the influence, and liquor, and I see liquor and tobacco, in the long run, have much worse of a side effect than methamphetamine as a narcotic. I don't understand why, you know, can I vote on that, or can we make a motion to legalize something like that? Because I don't understand, is it just about money with you guys, or what?
No, I think actually, I mean, it's about your comments at this time, which we're going to take, and you're on record with us.
Okay.
And that's the most important thing.
But I've been showing up, and I appreciate you guys a lot, but I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page, or that there is someone representing the youth of Nevada. And so that's why I show up to these, and that was before I mentioned, before I bring social, you know, my social groups, to come, you know, investigate on you guys, and to see if, you know, it's worth actually coming into these meetings. So, that's why, thank you for giving me the time up here.
Okay, thank you.
But I was just wondering if you would consider that...
Thank you very much.
...as something to look at?
Thank you.
Maybe the next time I show up? Would that be okay?
You keep coming, it's public comment.
Okay.
You're welcome here at all times.
Well, thank you, Mayor Goodman.
Thank you.
I just didn't want any problems.
Thank you. All right, ladies, you waited a long day, I hope you got lunch.
I did. Thank you. Okay.
Your name?
Wendy Mayoz, M-E-O-Z. I'm here about the Rainbow Company Youth Theater. I've gotten my notes organized since this morning, so that was a good thing. I want to clarify some of the statements that were made this morning, just so that we have it all organized. The Youth Theater was organized in 1976, and it has been for 38 years a program of the city of Las Vegas. It has received national awards, and most recently, in 2010, the Children's Theater Foundation of America Award, which is a medallion award. This honor was given to Rainbow Company because of its, quote, "diverse and extensive education program of classes, annual workshops, outreach programs, touring and productions which are without parallel." And names Karen McKinney and Tony Malloy Tudor on its website as the recipients. This is not an award for which one can fill out an application, the foundation does its own research and finds its recipients. So, the Rainbow Company is a program which has had longevity, a proven method of education, and a record of success and recognition. What this program has offered the Las Vegas Valley citizens for 38 years are classes after school and on weekends, summer programs and camps, special workshops, student theater ensemble, performances, history, math, literature, music, art, dance, teamwork, and life skills. In 2011, the Reed Whipple Cultural Center closed, necessitating the move from Charleston to Charleston Heights with everything that Rainbow Company had. This is the reason numbers are down. The 2011 to '12 performance season had to be reduced from five shows a year to four. Three of those shows are held at Charleston Heights Art Center, and the number of performances for each show was reduced from eight to seven. One of the shows is produced at, the tour show is shown at the Fifth Street School. There are no technical theater capabilities at that facility. There, it is only shown one weekend, and so that show was reduced from eight performances a year to four. There's no scene shop at Charleston Heights in which to teach classes in construction and set design as there were at Reed Whipple. Nor do the student ensemble members now have the ability to apply the skills that they used to learn as part of the program to build scenery for the company's productions. There's no storage space at Charleston Heights for the set pieces or furniture, and there's limited costume storage. There's no space for special workshops or additional rehearsals at Charleston Heights, nor is there alternative rehearsal space available to Rainbow Company for productions when Charleston Heights is used for other arts events, as it still is. So in the past three years, there's been a loss of time for the Rainbow Company program. The number of classes offered by Rainbow Company staff has had to be reduced because of limited classroom space at Charleston Heights and due to the loss of the classroom space at Reed Whipple. In years past, classes by the staff were taught at both Charleston Heights and Reed Whipple throughout the year, including in the summers. That's no longer a physical possibility. In late 2012, one of the staff members, there had been four staff members full-time for a number of years. So in late 2012, Jay Neal retired after 20-plus years with Rainbow Company. Jay filled the roles, these roles, and so many more. Sound designer, tour director, musician and composer, actor, carpenter, and instructor. They were an integral role to the goals of Rainbow Company and for what they deliver to the Las Vegas community. But somehow, Jay's position was reassigned to some other work unit at the city of Las Vegas and not to Rainbow Company. So since late 2012, the remaining staff has covered as best they could that position, and at times had part-time workers who've come in to fill in. But those are not committed to the company as a full-time hire would be. Then this year, in April, Dr. Tony Malloy Tudor retired, as she had planned, after nearly 20 years with Rainbow Company. She fulfilled the role as education director, and she directed at least one show each year. She supervised classes. She directed the box office. She was an actor. To this date, two and a half months later, even though she announced her retirement before April, no replacement has been discussed with the staff, nor has the remaining staff been informed if her position will be retained for the Rainbow Company. That normally, by this time of year, they are able to announce what their season is for next year.
Okay, I think what you have, Mrs. Meoz, and real respect of everything, because I know we all just really have loved the Rainbow Company and its place in our community. That was so well-written. I am going to ask you to make copies of it. Get one to each of the councilpeople, and make sure you get it to our city manager, Betsy Fratwell, with a copy to Nancy Deener.
I will.
Who's the head of cultural affairs. And as we mentioned in the brief time we had this morning when Mrs. Riordan spoke, that obviously, our hope is that you will be included in conversations as they move forward now. Ms. Fratwell is out of town, and Mr. Vincent's acting on her behalf. So if we have someone who could copy this, Mrs. Bridges, do we have somebody? If you'll give them right here to our clerk, and we will make, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I don't think our council needs it. And then one for Ms. Deener and one for Ms. Fratwell. So let's do nine, please. And one for our, oh my goodness, and one for Mrs. Bridges. She was upset. I forgot her.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. And just, I mean, the main thing is, if you're not hearing, it doesn't hurt to send an email. We're all the same. It's first initial, last name, LasVegasNevada.gov.
Yes.
So I'm sure you will hear. We have a wonderful staff. I hear somebody saying, "Your Honor." Do you need some? I have water.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Your Honor, I just wanted to add that I attended with my father and my wife the Ozma from Oz, the last production that they did. And the smaller theater was packed. So the numbers are not down because people aren't going. The numbers are down because people can't get in.
So these are all part of it, and, you know, we're a reasonable soul, and a few of us are very intelligent. Really, everybody really just wants this to work. So the key is to be involved, stay involved with it. And we really appreciate your coming down, because if you don't speak out, we don't know what's happening sometimes. So, thank you. Wait for your copy, and we'll give one to our, certainly to our Beverly Bridges right here and to Mr. Mark Vincent for, we could also give one to Mr. Cervantes if he wanted one. He's in charge of our community development. So, anyone else wishing to be heard at this time? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 79, and we all talk, so they're still coming. Don't give us up. Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city councilmembers during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. Better to ask this question, is there any member of council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? Of course, everybody wants to speak. I'm starting with Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Thank you very much. I just want to emphasize again that on Friday, June 27th, I believe something is being shown for you. We're having the Garside Pool opening. We'll have DJ performance by the Desert Mermaids, and we'll have some summer treats while supplies last. And we'll have a lot of yabba dabba doo fun with our bones and a bent towards the historical information related to where the pool has been built, which we think will be very educational for the children. And Helen Mortensen is helping us with that. So we think it'll be a fun time, and we will have free swimming, beginning at 10:00. And we'll have swimsuits necessary, of course, to swim. I just mentioned that because some strange things have been happening lately, so I thought I'd mention that, Mayor.
And no diapered children in the pool.
Yeah, you have to have the swimsuits. But in any case, this has been a long time in the coming. We work very hard. And Kristy Garnas has got a lot of fun there with the dinosaur theme. And I hope you all can come and enjoy yourselves and have a fun day of swimming in our brand-new pool. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. My monthly coffee with the councilmen will be taking place on July 3rd from 9:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m. at Starbucks, located at 751 Rancho and Bonanza. So please feel free to come out and enjoy coffee on me and talk to me about anything that you prefer. In addition to that, on July 6th, Bluegrass in the Park is continuing to take place monthly, the first Sunday of every month. The next Bluegrass concert will take place on Sunday, July 6th, from 7:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. Come out and enjoy the music of local bluegrass bands playing traditional American music with banjos, fiddles, guitars, and mandolins. This is a free event for the entire family to enjoy, so please visit my website for additional information. On July 12th, the Ward Five Summer Splash. Families are invited to join me for the annual Ward Five Summer Splash party taking place on Saturday, July 12th, from noon to 4:00 p.m. at the Doolittle Community Center. The pool is open and free to the entire public, so please come out and enjoy a fun-filled afternoon with myself and my family as we swim at Doolittle Community Center and cool off for the summer time and enjoy treats for all ages. And also, I'm encouraging you to please bring a neighbor or a friend. On July 19th through, I'm sorry, July 17th through the 19th, Hoops for Hope. Please join me and Indiana Pacers point guard CJ Watson for the 12th Annual Hoops for Hope Basketball Camp and Parents Workshop taking place from July 17th through the 19th, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the Doolittle Community Center. The camp is designed to develop and empower youth to eat healthy and to exercise daily. Youth from 4th grade to 8th grade are welcome. Participants will learn techniques and fundamentals of basketball and how important life skills are to teach individuals. This is a free event, and registration is required by July 6th. For more information, please call 778-3315, and that's area code 702. Remember, the area codes have, you must dial the area code now. So that number, once again, is 702-778-3315, or visit the QuietStormFoundation.com. Ward Five social media. You can stay informed with your councilman, Ricky Barlow, with events and matters happening within Ward Five by following me on Twitter and Facebook. If you would like to receive the Ward Five newsletter, please visit my website and send your email address to my staff by contacting my office at area code 702-229-5443. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Barlow. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of announcements to make about happenings in Ward Three. This Friday, the 20th of June, we have a groundbreaking for a new operation on Bonanza. It is part of the Desert Pines Community. This is going to be a building on their property that'll help host a Boys and Girls Club. And we need more of those things. The Nevada Hand is responsible for maintaining Desert Pines Community Resource Center, and they do a wonderful job. The place is spick and span clean, and I think, you know, we should drop by and say hi and make sure that they, you know, that they have our support. They know that we like what they do. On the 27th of this month, we have two events happening, and one of it's going to be right here in City Hall. We're going to have the second meeting of the Latino Network of Southern Nevada. It's a forum, and anybody is welcome to come in. It's in the chambers here. And we will have experts on various issues relating to the economy and to jobs for people in the Latino community. Because what we're doing with the community is helping people understand how to relate to each other and how to relate to this entire economy, this ecosystem of Southern Nevada. Latinos are here in great numbers. The growth is slowing. They are maturing in this neighborhood. We all want them here. They are welcome, and they are paying their way. These business people and social services people are very important to the vibrant economy here. I think anybody who's curious about the Latino community can come in and watch and see and hear the experts talk about what's going on. That same day in the evening, we have a lot of fun happening at Huntridge Park. We're going to have Harmony Night, which is an amalgamation of people from various parts of the Huntridge and the central core of the city coming to watch Hairspray. That's the 2007 version everybody likes to talk about because it's not the first. But the remake is of all these stars, and it's a lot of fun. It's a hoot. And, you know, coming out to Huntridge Park is a lot of fun. It's easy to get to. There's parking in the neighborhood. Granted, there aren't very many parking spaces right at the park. But if you come around and get early and park there, neighbors do not object as long as you do not park in front of their driveway. And come on out and see the Huntridge Park, one of the oldest parks in Las Vegas. It's all renewed with a children's play area that's second to none. And we expect to have a good crowd. Bring your blankets, bring your chairs. There's room. Bring food. We'll have a food truck for sure, and popcorn and water for everybody, but you have to buy your own food. But it's economically priced from the food trucks. Now, I want to just say a couple of words about Ward Three. A very special citizen of Ward Three. That's all I have on those announcements. But 10 days ago, a resident of Ward Three, Joe Wilcox, was killed by two assassins who murdered police officers Beck and Soldo at CC's Restaurant on Ellis near Stewart. Joe was a resident of Ward Three. He lived in Mobile Home Park with his mom and her sisters. And there's other extended family living in trailers there in that Mobile Home Park. Joe, doing his duty as a citizen, interfered with a crime in progress by slowing down the assault on the Walmart store that was happening Sunday, the, I believe it was the 8th of June. Joe was a legal carrying, a legal holder of a permit for carrying a concealed weapon. He had never drawn that weapon before. I know he had training, but I don't think they can train you for the circumstance that Joe faced that day. These two assassins had targeted Metro Police Officers, found them in a restaurant that they frequent, and murdered them without any warning, just as we all know from watching the news. But Joseph did not know about that crime a few hundred feet away. And when a man walked into the store, fired some shots, and put everybody on notice that they were in danger, instead of Joe walking away, running, hiding, ducking, he got up and he confronted the man who came in. He did what you're trained to do when you have concealed weapon, and that is to give warning that you're going to have to expose this weapon, and it's for a reason. And he gave a warning. And in so doing, he signed his death warrant. Because when the man had come in and saw Joseph, he didn't know, Joseph didn't know that his wife was behind him. And Amanda Miller shot him dead on the spot. But Joseph interfering in the case here, delayed the assassins and allowed police to get closer to the scene and bought time for the people in that store so that no one else was hurt. So he gave his life, and he didn't even realize he was doing it to avenge the death of policemen. He did not know what he was up against. But as a rare, rare citizen, he went to the trouble instead of running away from it. No one asked him to do that. Ward Three has a special award that we give people for their duty, their public service, but not in their professional line, but rather as citizens operating outside their professions. And so on Tuesday, and I know I sent a circular to all the members on Monday, but on Tuesday, I and a member of my staff visited Joseph's mom in the Mobile Home Park there. And we presented her with the Ward Three Medal of Valor and posthumously to Joseph. Mrs. Wilcox would be in no position, no mental shape or frame, to be in public to receive that. So we did that quietly with her family members present yesterday morning. And she very much appreciated that, and she understands what is happening, but she is in deep shock right now. Her mourning will never end, as it would never end for the loss of a loved one, especially a child. But we, I believe, have a duty to continue to honor the Wilcox family. And there is a funeral this Sunday afternoon. It'll be the final funeral for the three people who were killed by these assassins. I call them assassins for a reason. In Spanish, we call them assassinos. But these people perpetrated a political assassination of the worst kind in a blow against government. They really didn't, I don't think people, the public, really understood. They sought out people who represent the government. These men were part of the unit that had been at Mesquite. And Mesquite in the Bundy chaos, there are a lot of people who identified the police officers on duty. It was common knowledge that these police officers were from the unit that had tried to establish law and order. And now that's over, and yet it isn't over. I invite all of us to come to that funeral to pay homage to Mr. Wilcox, and let's never forget his memory. I know his mom will appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Beers?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. And thank you, Councilman Coffin, for your words. A week from Thursday, on June 26th, we will be having cigars and beers with beers at the cigar store in Tivoli, 5:30 to 7:30. Please come down if you enjoy that sort of thing and tell me what you're thinking about what we do here in the city of Las Vegas. On July 11th will be our next Coffee with the Councilman. That'll be at Rachel's Kitchen up by the Vaughan Shopping Center in the big circle that has the library in the middle of it. I wish there was a shorter way to say that, but I haven't figured it out yet in 22 years. On this day, finally in music history, the A-Rap device was actually invented in 1948.
The who what?
A rap device, you know, the record player. 33 1/3 LP was actually invented on this date in 1948. Nowadays, we see them being scratched back and forth by DJs. Also on this date in 1967, the Jimi Hendrix Experience made its debut. Also on this date in 1967, the Jimi Hendrix Experience made its debut performance at the Monterey Pop Festival in California. Another tragic loss at the wrong age. And that's all we have for Ward Two. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. And Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I know everyone's been asking me today where I've got this one-of-a-kind.
Yes.
Very special tie.
Patented immediately.
And one that says, yes, patented. The one that says, "We love you Papa" on the front and the other one says, on the other side, "Papa is awesome" on the back. Custom tie by two of my granddaughters, Ruthie and Olive Ross, for Papa's Day, not Father's Day.
Now, but wait a minute, how old?
I'm going to blow this, I know. I want to, I'm going to say four and two.
Okay, wonderful.
I have so many, it's hard for me to keep track. And, and Your Honor, there's a close-up of his tie, both sides posted on his Twitter. There you go.
Oh, but it's pretty good from here.
Check it on Twitter.
Isn't that clever?
Yeah, this is awesome. This is, this is my son Matt's daughter's, his daughter's, so.
And what did your son Matt do on Father's Day?
Yeah, he actually handed me this tie. No, the girls did. But I've got wonderful children and of course, I hope everybody had a wonderful Father's Day. Real brief, Mayor, fun stuff, Movie in the Park, this Friday night, the 20th, at Centennial Hills Amphitheater. The movie is Frozen.
Oh, that's so popular.
And it's going to be fun. I've seen little excerpts of this many times in my house, but never have sat down to watch the whole thing. It is free to your families. Come on out, bring a blanket and folding chairs. The amphitheater will seat easily a thousand, we have a thousand out for the last movie in the park. So folks, come on out. It's going to be a lot of fun. Kona Ice is our sponsor this, this, this week for the Movie in the Park and hope to see everybody out there. I'm not, I'm going to start the movie about 8:15, 8:30 when the sun goes down.
No school, so.
No school, so kids can stay up late. On a more serious note, we continue our partnership with Nevada Childseekers. Our missing young lady today is Margaret Bates, her name is, she's 14 years old, five foot eight, 175 pounds, last seen on June 5th. She was last seen in the area of North Jones and Smoke Ranch Road. She has a nose piercing on her right nostril and she was last seen wearing a white t-shirt, black jeans, black socks and slippers, carrying a backpack with personal belongings. Please, 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 anyone that has any information to the whereabouts of this young lady, we want to get her back with folks that will take care of her. Please contact the Las Vegas Metro Police Department, 702-828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers, And Mayor and councilmembers, Nevada Childseekers doesn't only just look for children that are missing. They, if anyone's out there that is having challenges at home, maybe being abused, not being fed, on the streets or having substance abuse issues, please contact Nevada Childseekers. We will, they will help you get, point you in the right direction to get help that you need. So thank you, Mayor and Council.
Wonderful, thank you. And I believe our next city council meeting is July, Wednesday, July 2nd. So we wish you a good, solid rest of the week and a good weekend when you get there. And this meeting is adjourned.